Second hearing of the committee's inquiry into procurement practices of government agencies in New South Wales and its impact on the social development of the people of New South Wales. I acknowledge the Gadigal people of the Eora nation and the traditional custodians of the lands on which we are meeting today. I pay my respects to elders past and present and celebrate the diversity of Aboriginal peoples and their ongoing cultures and connections to the lands and wards of New South Wales. I also acknowledge and pay my respects to any Aboriginal on Torres Strait Islander people joining us today. My name is Sarah Kane and I am the Chair of the Committee. I ask everyone in the room to please turn their mobile phones to silent. Parliamentary privilege applies to witnesses in relation to the evidence they give today. However, it doesn't apply to what witnesses say outside of the hearing. I urge witnesses to be careful about making comments to the media or to others after completing their evidence. In addition, the Legislative Council has adopted rules to provide procedural fairness for inquiry participants. I encourage committee members and witnesses to be mindful of these procedures. Welcome and thank you for making the time to come and give evidence. Could each of you please state your name, position, title, and swear either an oath or an affirmation?
Good morning, Chair and to the Committee. Mirat Ishtar, Secretary of the New South Wales Department of Education. I solemnly, sincerely, and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Paul Hannan. I am the Group Director of Procurement or Chief Procurement Officer within the Department of Education. I solemnly, sincerely, and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you very much. Would you like to make a short opening statement?
I would, Chair, thank you. Thanks, Chair, and thanks to the Committee for the opportunity to make an opening statement. Can I also start by acknowledging that we're on the lands of the Gadigal of the Eora and I'd like to pay my respects to their elders, past, present, and emerging. At the outset, I'd like to acknowledge the inextricable link between government and its impact on the social development of the people of New South Wales. As a proud product, parent, and teaching professional of the public education system in New South Wales, I can speak with confidence about that impact in terms of the transformative power of public education. In New South Wales, there are more than 1.2 million learners in early childhood, in public schools, and in training. A simple but powerful ethos in the department is that we believe in every one of them, and we seek to support them with an outstanding educational offering that enables them to realise their potential. In this way, we understand in public education the importance of what we do and the responsibility we have in terms of our impact on the social development of the people of New South Wales. And so it is that I understand the Committee's intent and indeed the New South Wales Government's desire to explore and expand the possibilities around procurement in terms of social development. Likewise, I understand the role that procurement plays in our organisation towards this end. The Department of Education undertakes significant procurement activities across three major domains. The first of these is school construction and construction-related professional services such as architects and engineering services. The second is asset management, essentially the maintenance and necessary upgrades of schools. And the third and final is goods and services, everything ranging from school stationery supplies through to audiovisual equipment and IT hardware and software. With more than 2,200 public schools and the need to build many more to support New South Wales' growing communities, the bulk of our procurement relates to building and maintaining the significant infrastructure footprint required to deliver public education in New South Wales. As outlined in the department's submission, we adopt a centralised approach to procurement with oversight by the Chief Procurement Officer. Further to our submission, I'd like to update the Committee that I have recently transferred the procurement functions from school infrastructure in New South Wales to our operations group. This change is one of many that I have instigated to best deliver our strategic direction set out in the Government's plan for New South Wales' public education. Our procurements support the entire organisation, especially the day-to-day needs of our schools, and the move into our operations group will foster stronger relationships with other enabling teams and support functions, including our finance and risk teams, which are also part of the operations group. The department's procurement activities comply with all government legislation, policies, and New South Wales Procurement Board directions. And within those frameworks, the department ensures that we're obtaining value for money with both non-price and price factors assessed as part of tenders. I can confirm for the Committee that the department is committed to ensuring social procurement and sustainable targets are met and enhanced where possible. Beyond compliance, the procurement team provides guidance as well as assistance to business units in first considering small business, an Aboriginal business, disability enterprise, or a local business for engagement. Let me share a couple of examples that demonstrate different kinds of approaches that support social development to the extent that we are able. The first is manufacturing for schools. Through the innovative Manufacturing for Schools Programme, the department is using modern methods of construction to deliver a new age of school building construction. The programme incorporates a range of cutting-edge construction techniques, including digital technologies, off-site manufacturing, and onsite assembly of prefabricated elements to deliver high-quality school buildings faster and at a lower cost than that which traditional construction methods produce. The programme allows us to leverage economies of scale through the bulk purchase of standard buildings. Ultimately, this enables the department to deliver schools on average 20% cheaper and 30% faster when compared to traditional construction methods. Whilst this approach is relatively new, over time, we are confident it will deliver significant and improved social impacts through the creation of new jobs, expanded opportunities for local training and upskilling, and harnessing inherent productivity and safety gains to improve working conditions in the construction industry. The second example is supporting social development through the department's new facilities management contract, which commenced in July of 2023. This approach requires our engaged facilities management partners to focus on engagement of businesses within a 50-kilometre radius or about 30 minutes of the school where the work is required. It also promotes engagement levels with Aboriginal businesses. While there's more work to be done, Chair, I'm pleased to report that to date we've achieved more than 126 engagements with Aboriginal-owned business. Lastly, and more broadly, I want to give you a sense of the breadth of the Department of Education's procurement with regional and local businesses. Given the nature of the public education system in New South Wales, with more than 2,200 schools located in all parts of the state, the department actively uses procurement practices to promote widespread engagement of local suppliers. For school maintenance, the department seeks to work with local trades who are based in local communities in order to be more responsive to the needs of schools and to provide better working conditions for local tradespeople, including faster payment terms. Chair, by numbers, for the financial year 2022/23, this translates to there being 13,170 engagements with metropolitan suppliers and 6,680 engagements with regional suppliers. In real terms, this constitutes significant engagement with regional and local businesses across New South Wales, supporting local economic sustainability and growth. As the Committee is no doubt aware, the New South Wales Government is committed to reforming New South Wales Government procurement practices, with particular emphasis on supporting local manufacturing, small business, local industry, and jobs. And the Department of Education is keen to play its role in leveraging these kind of outcomes, and it stands at the ready to respond to the New South Wales Government's procurement reforms. Paul and I welcome the opportunity to inform the Committee's considerations in this regard.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ishtar. Over to the Opposition for questions.
Mr. Ishtar, you sound like a model agency. Who is the contractor supplying the new demountables?
We have demountables...
No, the one that you described in your opening.
On the modern methods of construction. I'll get Mr. Hannan to add that detail. I can tell you particular projects where we've used...
Now, who is the contractor who's delivering?
Where we've used the modern methods of construction, and we have recently run a procurement process and engaged a body to undertake that work for us. Mr. Hannan might have that detail.
So APP is the organisation that is going to be helping us with the integrator role?
So take us through the process that they were selected for the process of delivering.
So we ran an EOI initially in order to shortlist, so that was done about 15, probably 18 months ago, so I don't have the exact dates, I would have to come back to you on the exact dates. We ended up with a shortlisted group of organisations. We then went through an RFP process where we got down to two parties. We then ran parallel negotiations with those two parties, and the outcome being that APP was the successful.
Well, I'm interested in the extent to which, when you are negotiating that, the procurement policy framework is adopted in relation to those negotiations.
Everything we do within our procurement team is done within the procurement policy framework, so I'd need to understand the question a bit more specifically.
Well, are the tender documents, do they in fact require the tendering parties to outline the extent to which they will comply with the procurement policy framework?
Yes, they would do.
They would do or did do?
I would have to come back to you with specifics in terms of the actual documents themselves.
So the actual document will set out, the tender document that you in fact require the tenderers to actually use for the purpose of tendering, goes through the procurement policy framework requirements?
They are required to meet their obligations under those as opposed to us meeting our requirements. There's two different sides of that, obviously.
Mr. Chair, could I just ask you to bring the microphone a bit closer?
Well, it's pretty important. The Secretary has just in fact told us how you do comply with all your obligations. Here is a contractor that you're engaging with. How are you monitoring their level of engagement with the procurement policy framework?
Okay, so that contract has only been signed about two months or so ago, so it is really in the ramp-up stage at this point in time. The business unit involved, which would be the school infrastructure team, would be the ones that are overseeing the delivery aspects of that particular contract and the contract management components with guidance from the procurement team.
Well, and for example, we talked about Aboriginal procurement policy. Has an assessment been done already in relation to that contract as to the ability of APP?
APP was...
Yeah, APP to be able to comply with their obligations.
They would have had to have submitted an Aboriginal participation plan as part of that tender response, yes.
And is that made clear in the tender documents, is it?
Absolutely, everybody needs to, when... All nine parties would have had to have responded to that as part of the requirements to the tender.
Okay. Just in respect of contracts that are engaged by the agency, and that's in relation to a whole of government contracts and specific for the agency, but in relation, what percentage of the suppliers are from New South Wales?
We'd have to take the specific on notice and come back to you by way of contracts awarded and providers in New South Wales.
So would it be more than 50%?
I don't have that available here, but we're happy to come back to you.
Surely, I would suspect, and again, we'll have to come back to specifics, but because of the vast majority of what we do is the maintaining of schools, and therefore a lot of our tenders are run in that local kind of region, therefore, yes, there would be... I would suspect that the large majority is local businesses, yes.
I would have thought more than 50% would be...
I would suspect that you're right. I don't want to hesitate a guess as to what it is, but I would suggest that it is probably high-end.
Do you have an oversight component of your construction team which actually oversees compliance with the procurement policy framework?
The project delivery teams are also responsible for managing the contract and all of the conditions of the contract that go along with that.
Is there any report back, is there any report back about that?
We do monitor and report back, yes. So for instance, on our Aboriginal participation, we have to report that back to central government, back to New South Wales procurement. We do that on a regular basis, and that's part of the reporting that they put forward on by New South Wales.
Right, well, let me take you to a specific contract, the contract in relation to the contaminated mulch. How was that awarded?
Are you talking, Mr. Tudhope, the Liverpool West site?
Yep, Alambie-Crainbrook-Liverpool West Public Schools.
The ones that impacted on public schools, yeah.
How was that contract awarded?
Mr. Hannan might have that detail, yeah.
Given the nature of the immediacy of the response, that was done under emergency procurement provisions. We needed to get that school active again, so we didn't do a tender process, that was done through a direct engagement, which the procurement framework allows for in emergency situations.
Correct. So I'm just, I'm interested in the original contract for the delivery of mulch to those schools. Surely, that wasn't an emergency procurement?
No, it wasn't. I might dive in there, Mr. Tudhope. There was about 12 public schools across that period where we were identified through the Environmental Protection Authority to go and work with hygienists to take samples to test.
No, 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 the original contract, Mr. Ishtar.
Yeah, so some of them, well, that would have been specific to each site. So for example, Liverpool West, Mr. Tudhope, was an entire major capital rebuild of an existing school, so that had a contract awarded to the builder of that site.
And who was the builder of that site?
I don't have the detail here.
Adco. Adco, and in the contract awarded to Adco, was there any provision in that contract which required compliance by subcontractors with procurement policy framework?
Again, Mr. Hannan might give the detail, but on all major capital upgrade contracts, there would have been requirements around both the building facilities, landscaping, finished products.
But with the subcontractors, are the subcontractors in the contract documents which they sign with the head contractor?
We would have, I would have to come back to you on the specifics of that particular engagement with Adco. We use the standard GC21, which is the construction contract, so we would make sure that our engagement with Adco would have had that covered out. I can't comment about how Adco engaged with the market to provide those, to get those suppliers. I'd have to come back to you with specifics on the documents.
Well, I would have thought, was there, is there any provision in the head contract with Adco relating to ensuring that the contractors that they engage are complying with procurement policy framework? And what are the, and what oversight does education have in relation to the terms of the subcontracts?
Yeah, again, let's come back to you like Mr. Hannan indicated on the detail. We follow the whole of government contract for the construction of schools. We do have a project director that we appoint onto major capital builds like the example at Liverpool West, who then makes sure that the deliverer of the contract is meeting all the requirements of that contract.
So going forward, of course, now that we've had this issue relating to those schools, what steps are you taking now to have some sort of oversight in respect of the delivery of product to school sites, which in fact will not be putting kids at risk?
Well, I mean, in what was a very unfortunate circumstance, particularly Liverpool West, where we had to take a step of decanting a school and moving it down the road to Gull Yungara Public and cohabitating on that site for four weeks, you know, what occurred there should not have occurred. It's the subject of proceedings now.
But it's a specific question. Are you taking steps now to have more oversight in relation to the contracts with subcontractors to ensure that this won't happen again?
We have written to all our major contractors on building sites around the matter of the mulch that occurred and relayed back again our expectations of meeting landscaping requirements.
So what's the, what was the total value of contract labour procured by the department in 22/23?
Not sure if we've got that figure in front of us. Mr. Hannan, do you have that?
Contract labour.
Contract labour, is that contingent labour? Oh, yeah, I can talk to contingent labour. It varies on a monthly basis.
But for the, for the period, 22/23, what was the value of the work done for contingent labour?
Let me just see if I have that detail for you. I've got the monthly spend from July to January this year.
But you've got to reduce it by 25%.
Yeah.
What steps are you taking actually to do that, to reduce that by 25%?
A number, from our peak of about 1,610 in July 2023, I've reduced it under my leadership to 1,116, about 600 positions, and we've gone...
So what were all those 600 positions doing before?
We've gone...
So who's doing the work now?
We've gone from a monthly spend of about 34.5 million...
Well, who's doing the work that they were doing?
To 17.3 million. Well, we've done a range of things. One, some of those, all of those were time-limited and have, in some cases, met what was required to be delivered and so...
So, Tom, okay. You've additionally required to reduce spending on contractors and management consultants by $411 million over four years to help pay for the teachers' pay rise. Will any of this work need to be done in-house? And in respect of that work which is now going to be saved, where is that coming from and who's doing that work now?
Yeah, I was trying to explain to you, Mr. Tudhope, and I'd like to give a fulsome answer if that's okay, Chair, for the Committee. I indicated that under my leadership, we've reduced about 600 contractor positions and brought the spend down from 34.5 million a month to about 18 million a month. And that's got a range of mechanisms. Number one, in all contingent labour, as you'd appreciate, Mr. Tudhope, some of them, they're time-limited, so we don't require the role anymore. In other cases, we have created ongoing permanent employment inside the organisation.
Well, that's not a saving then, is it?
We've run a competitive process because we need the ongoing, repeatable expertise in the organisation. And in some cases, that contingent labour has been the successful applicant, in other cases, it hasn't been the case. I wouldn't concur with the premise that that's not savings because in my experience of looking at those positions, contingent labour, we're paying often more than what it looks like for an ongoing role. So it's been a combination of both no longer requiring some roles as well as converting some roles into permanent, repeatable expertise in the organisation.
It's a pity I've got no more time, Mr. Ishtar.
You don't. To the crossbench, Miss Boyd?
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Since we last spoke about contractors, there's been a, there's been more reporting about the so-called largesse of contractor spend within the Education Department. I note that in that latest reporting, it's mentioned that the government has now established a special task force of some sort to look into this. There's kind of two aspects here. There's the sheer sort of amount of money being spent on contractors, but there's also the way in which these people are coming to be contracted in the first place. This task force, will it be looking at both aspects?
Yeah, I've, as Secretary, commissioned a small group to go and work on with all divisions, all areas, to look at every single contingent labour role that we have. Is it required? Is it required on an ongoing basis, like I said earlier, Miss Boyd, by way of repeatable expertise? And if it's repeatable expertise, I've even asked for the duration that that's been in place so that we can convert, if it's required, ongoing into permanent roles in the organisation. And if not required, then to remove those roles as well. And I can tell you, Miss Boyd, since July last year, we've been able to generate $54 million in savings through that work. We've already been at work. I've indicated to the Committee that there's been 600 positions that have been removed by way of contingent labour. But we're a very large organisation, Miss Boyd, and I believe there's more that can be done in that space, and that's why I wanted a special team to look at that. Now, an organisation of our size will always require some degree of contingent labour. I'd like to bring that back to a healthy state.
So the question I asked had sort of those two aspects, though. So we heard yesterday from ICAC where they talked about the risks involved in contractors being appointed for long periods of time, being involved in employing other contractors from which they then benefit. Are those issues being looked at by your task force as well to make sure there was no sort of inappropriate appointments?
It's a good question, Miss Boyd, so. I'd like to get oversight, and that's what I've asked the task force to do for me as Secretary, on every single role, how that role came to be, the length of that role, how that role was filled, whether it should be removed or whether it should require a repeatable, ongoing expertise in the organisation.
Okay, but you will be looking at sort of how they came about in the first place.
Yes, yes, I'd like to know that, as Secretary.
What workforce consultation do you have in place for procuring things that impact on the workplace and workers? So for instance, when you are trying to procure, you know, new software or design for new classroom layouts, things like that, what consultation is undertaken at the sort of development stage, I guess, before that procurement is finalised?
I'll get Mr. Hannan to give further detail, but anything of that significance, and we've got controls in place that require Deputy Secretary or Secretary approval, would be led by that business area and that Deputy Secretary for that division. It would come to the executive for discussion, and then we would proceed with Paul and his team around procurement activity.
Yeah, but what about sort of co-designing, I guess, or consulting with teachers and other educators in the classroom, for instance?
Okay.
In terms of how you, sort of what you're looking for when you go out to tender?
Now, that's a really good question. So if I take the premise of school buildings and school construction, we put together a project reference group on every single project, which has the principal and has the department represented on that project reference group. We do have a school facilities standard, and that dictates, you know, the size of spaces, how many spaces per population of the school, et cetera. It's not like a blank sheet, but it allows for input at the local level about how to best optimise that build. So if I give you a real example, Miss Boyd, I was at North Sydney Public yesterday. It's had a major capital upgrade, and in that major capital upgrade, we were able to achieve a new admin section for the front entry of the school, for the SAS staff who are the first point of contact for the school at the front of the school. It used to be at the side of the school, so that was an enhancement that came along through representation of the project reference group.
So thank you. So that's quite a localised example where you've got a particular school having input into how their school is being redesigned or rebuilt. But what about things that are sort of department-wide, I guess, so software that gets used in school classrooms, that kind of thing? Are teachers and other people consulted with before those procurement decisions are made?
So we consult with the peak bodies, the PPA, the SPC, the Federation, in line with that work, but we do follow a more standardised approach when we're then rolling those out. We don't consult on every single project. We consult on the directions we're taking, take that input, and then make sure every classroom has that technology, for instance.
Thank you.
Can I just add a comment to that? For instance, at the moment, we're looking at the educational resources. It's a fairly major project for us. We've spoken to, as Mr. Ishtar mentioned, the part of the SPC and the PPA, the Finance and Administration Reference Group. That includes school principals. We ask those to provide us with representatives, school representatives, in order to help inform that particular contract. So I think that kind of touches on what you're looking for.
Yeah, okay. I think my time's...
Yes, yours is continuing.
I'm interested in when you use Public Works and when school infrastructure in New South Wales does things directly. So for instance, I understand that Public Works is doing the Smart Energy Schools Pilot Programme. So when do you procure through Public Works and when does school infrastructure do it directly?
Yeah, I'll get Mr. Hannan again, Miss Boyd, to give you a bit more detail. In my opening remarks, I spoke about the new move on the facilities maintenance contract because a lot of our work, as you appreciate, 2,200 sites in every section of the state in trying to support local business and get better outcome and better efficiency, better employment opportunity, we've moved on a facilities maintenance contract where we look for local suppliers to go do the carpet, the painting, the repair of the windows... The repair of the window, et cetera. That used to be a lot more centralized. And we give those directions to local asset management units across the state and give them a, 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 a lot more runway to employ. Locally, rather than to send someone out from Sydney to Broken Hill. And, uh, uh, add to the cost and not add to the local economy. Did you want to add to that?
No, I think that pretty much hits the mark.
Okay, so public works, um, for where we're doing sort of more localized, um, work across the region. Is that the, sorry, across the state? Is that the?
In certain projects, we do work with public works. We did with the cooler classrooms, um, rollout. Public Works was our partner on that particular project. Um, they used to run the whole of government, um, uh, facilities management contract that we were a part of. We stepped away from that. Because we found that we could get a better outcome.
Yeah.
Um, the cleaning review is in place at the moment, um, which the outcomes of that will determine what happens in that cleaning space. So we're appropriate. We engage with public works. Um, I, I would suggest that, um, not everything is appropriate.
Yeah. When, um, so when we were speaking with public works yesterday, um, we got to the point of understanding that when they are. Um, procuring on the behalf of another, um, agency that they not necessarily, or they're not resourced really. To do any kind of monitoring or compliance of contractual terms and that sort of thing. Um, when you use public works, do you do any of that kind of monitoring, compliance of the end result, I guess?
I think when Drew was talking about that yesterday, he was more specifically talking about those agencies that aren't accredited to do the work in their own right. And so therefore, because we are accredited to do that construction, we are, we have a construction procurement accreditation.
Mm-hmm.
Therefore, we do that ourselves. We still do engage with public works from time to time.
Yeah.
But we don't have the need. Unaccredited agencies, I kind of need to go through them.
Yeah, okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, but when you do use them.
We would still monitor anyway. That's, that's, that's kind of, yeah. With, our expectation is that the business unit involved, so. Whatever business, it could be a delivery on a school, could be in that planned maintenance, whatever it might be.
Mm-hmm.
We would, we would still monitor that engagement.
Yeah, okay. Um, just back to the contractor, um, contractor point, um. Given, I guess, given the issues we raised in the consulting inquiry and through budget estimates, um, and the more recent reporting. Have there been, um, any, I guess, new developments in terms of things like tightening up conflicts of interest? Um, you know, compliance within the department or anything else, any other kind of changes that have been? Yeah, I understand we're waiting for a review about particular contracts, but as an overall. Sort of more macro level, are we, what, what's been done to ensure compliance with those rules?
Yeah, I've got to give a lot of credit to the leadership team that I lead, DepSec's in the large organisation because. You can't remove six hundred roles in that contingent workforce without having strong oversight. So we've made it. The, the, the case that if we're going to add to that number, if we're going to add new contingent workers, that, that requires deputy secretary approval.
Okay, but in terms of the actual procedures and policies that are being followed, is there, has there been any? I guess, any, any sort of, um, uh, improvement in the, um, monitoring and compliance aspects of?
And it goes to an earlier question that you asked, Miss Boyd. I'd like the task force to give me some advice on that if there's room for improvement there. And further tightening that's needed in looking at our entire contingent base. That's what I'll look for and make sure I adopt. Uh, I want to make sure as secretary we're meeting all necessary requirements, all conflict of interest, uh, tabling. And, uh, really hiring those that we need in the truest sense for contingent workforce.
Mm-hmm.
And then, uh, in, in the opposite case, making sure I've got repeatable expertise and not having. Uh, what I have found in my time in the twelve months as secretary, uh, 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 some. Roles that have gone on for, for too long as contingent workforce.
Yeah.
I don't think that's helpful for the individual or the organisation. So, yeah, I have asked the task force to look at that and give me advice on that.
Okay, um. Is there any, just back to that sort of compliance, I'm very, I'm bothered by the idea that we're just sort of setting up rules. That then don't get complied with and, and even if we do a check now, that then in the future, um, we're not necessarily, um. Going to be setting up more stringent processes for the future. Um, what is? Is there, you know, do you do any kind of like spot audit or is there potential for, um, for you to be looking at particular? Even if it's, you know, it comes back to that question about public works, if there's contracts, um, that aren't necessarily being monitored. Is there a, you know, do you do any kind of spot check to make sure?
Let me add one other detail that I forgot to give. In my time, I've introduced a new requirement where any engagement. That is over a hundred thousand dollars needs my approval as secretary.
Yep.
And any engagement below a hundred thousand dollars needs the deputy secretary's approval.
Okay, um, but in terms.
That wasn't there before.
No. Okay, and then in terms of, sorry, my question about sort of audits and spot checks. Is that something you do with any kind of, um, procurements of contractors and suppliers, et cetera?
We have just had an internal audit process that's wrapping up. And so I'm looking forward to receiving that report alongside whatever the task force might give me as well.
Okay.
But that has been an internal audit process that's been conducted.
Thank you. Maybe I pick up, just I think maybe to. Get it answered more directly to the question, I think, that Miss Boyd was asking. Um, I think the question, if I'm interpreting right. Is about auditing of, um, the contracts and the procurement process, which is a question we've been asking across government departments. As they come and, and, oh, Mr. Tudhope was also alluding to it earlier. So what happens post-award of the contract? Is there, are there spot checks that it's been complied with? What kind of process? And has that changed?
Yeah, so currently as it stands, Chair, uh, the business area is then responsible for the oversight of that contract. And can work with our procurement colleagues for assistance, but is an aspect that the internal audit has just looked at. Their report is imminent, and if there's further tightening there that's required, I'll adopt the recommendations of that audit process.
Okay, so just to clarify, the internal audit process.
Yes.
Also includes what happens with those external organisations that are engaged? Cause just when you said internal audit, I thought that was a department.
Contract and vendor management.
Right, okay, okay, so that's, that's.
Which is what you're asking about. Yes, absolutely.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to get clarity on that. I appreciate it. I wondered, um, also though, Mr. Dizza, you mentioned in, in the submission. Um, school infrastructure in New South Wales was still obviously an entity because it features large, quite, quite a large presence in the submission. So I wondered if you could explain to me a bit more the changes that you made and the rationale for it.
Yeah, so, um, school infrastructure, uh, is one division of the organisation. And at times, uh, it maybe was felt like it was in parallel to the organisation. As opposed to truly embedded in the organisation. And, uh, procurement led by, uh, Mr. Hannan. Was a business unit in school infrastructure. I've made the decision to lift and shift that function. To another division, the operations group. I believe that's a, a healthier fit and embeds procurement. As a resource and expertise across the whole organisation. While there was a lot of work in infrastructure. I felt like its leaning and its standing there, uh, would be better and healthier. At arm's length, and I made that decision. I'm also, um, recruiting for the head of infrastructure. And have re-titled the role to deputy secretary, school infrastructure. Cause when it was titled CEO, it was almost like people thought. It's another agency or it's another entity. So I wanted to.
Red like in the submission.
Yes, I wanted to make sure I, I brought that into play. Uh, I would say this, Chair. Um, I've, I've been, having been in public education for twenty seven years. School infrastructure, which came on board seven years ago, was a masterstroke, given what we need to. Do by way of construction of new schools and the capital upgrades and the maintenance and the cleaning. It's a massive machinery that was terribly under-resourced seven years ago, in my professional opinion. But having said that, I think it's run a little bit parallel and I'd like to bring it tighter inside the organisation. That's why I've made those moves.
Thank you, uh, very much for that. Um, I wondered, you spoke a- about, um. A commitment to social procurement and social outcomes. We've been having a discussion, um, over the last couple of days in the hearings about. How you determine amongst those other priorities, um, value for money, which is of course one of the objectives of the procurement framework. So I wondered if you could explain education's view on how you can set up or weight. Value for money in your contracts.
Yeah, let me lean on Mr. Hannan, who's, uh, at this every day. He'll have, uh, um, a lot more, uh, expertise on how we use the value for money. Both the monetary and non-monetary items in assessing how we go about delivering contracts.
Uh, so it, it very much depends on the particular component of work we're talking about. So if we're looking at the construction side of things. If we're trying to engage an architect or what we would classify as construction-related professional service, we tend to try and. Uh, weight more heavily on the non-price factors because that's where you need the expertise. That's where you need to make sure you get it correct. So it's less about the price, whereas when it comes to the actual construction itself, because had we. If we've done the job correctly with our professional services at the beginning, then we can rely more on getting value for money in the. Construction side. So it becomes more about, um, the price in the actual engagement of the construction contractor. Goods and services, it's different. It depends very much on the particular product or service you're looking for. You can't make an abject claim to just say everything should be the same. If you're going out for pens and pencils and stationery. It could be very much more about price, um, because it, a pencil is a pencil is a pencil. Whereas if you're going to get. A, a very tailored piece of professional a- advice, then you might be looking for the very best outcome. In which case it should be less about the price and more about the outcome that you're looking for and more about the non-price component. So. There is very much a piece of work that has to happen on every engagement. Now, for the construction side, pretty much we stick to the same. As I mentioned, the, the, in the non-price is the heavily weighted architects, engineers, things like that, the important parts. But in the goods and services space, it's more of a bit, it's, it's more of a procurement by procurement type of nature. Does that kind of make sense?
There's two quick follow-up questions, then I'll pass to my colleagues. One is, so you don't have sort of guidelines with, you know. Suggestions about value for money for different category or?
We, we, absolutely. We have every single procurement within the school infrastructure portfolio above ten thousand is looked after by a procurement person.
A specialist person for each area or like is it as a teacher who's a specialist in education materials?
So, no, uh, in the construction side.
Obviously not construction.
In the construction side, we have any, a- anything that's over ten thousand done, i- is done by a procurement professional. Any, in the non-construction side. It's anything over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is done by a procurement professional. So it's, it's about making sure we have, um, oversight for those. Particular engagements.
Thank you. I'll pass over.
Thanks. Uh, your submission doesn't deal particularly, uh, extensively with cur- uh, curriculum resources, procurement of curriculum resources. So I want to ask about that. Uh, so is it the case that, uh, the decision around curriculum resources? Uh, is predominantly determined at a school level? So schools will decide what curriculum resources they purchase?
Yeah, it's an excellent question, Mr. Diam. I mean, we, at the end of the day, we, we have to put trust, uh, in the, uh, professionalism of the teaching workforce. As you know from other committees, we do have, um, uh, policies in place, uh, that go to controversial issues and code of conduct. But we have been, as a system, providing more guidance across the last five years. And have ramped that up with the new curriculum rollout, where we've had experts employed by us. Producing scope and sequences lessons.
Is about whether most of the procurement of curriculum resources, that decision lies with schools.
At the end of the day, it's a school decision what resource they'll use.
So I want to ask about particularly multi-lit. Uh, so it's a provider of curriculum resources. That supports the transition, uh, to, uh, focus on phonics.
Hmm.
Uh, do you have any idea how much is being expended on contracts with multi-lit at a school by school?
So who's doing the work?
Uh, it'd be a school by school decision, as you indicated earlier. It's not a whole of department contract that we've entered into.
Yeah.
So, uh, we won't have necessarily a centralised figure on what that looks like.
So isn't that problematic? Because, I mean, ultimately, you, you could be dealing with millions of dollars, uh, in procurement. For the same product, split up over, you know, well, for multi-lit, I think it's predominantly primary schools, so. Uh, you know, fifteen hundred odd schools are making this decision. And I suppose my concern about multi-lit is that they've been. Uh, particularly, uh, strong in terms of advocating a particular policy shift. Which they then have a commercial interest and benefit from. And then those decisions are being, uh, effectively. Made at a local level without any proper oversight about whether that's an appropriate decision. And whether that there's alternative products.
Yeah.
That might be a better placed, uh, to deliver the same outcomes. Why isn't the department taking a kind of overarching decision on what it knows is going to be, uh, the same. Procurement occurring in multiple schools?
I, I really understand your concern. It's a good one. And that's why I was trying to indicate earlier that we are providing. A lot more centralised resource and material to say, here is evidence-based material produced by teachers. Whether that's in kindergarten, year two, year three, with the rollout of the curriculum, that should go to. Uh, abating the need for you to go to other providers to get that resource. So we do have a universal resource hub. It's well utilized with the curriculum rollout and familiarisation of curriculum. We've been producing units of work, scopes and sequences material. And as you know from a former committee, we also have created a marketplace. Where we can give guidance to schools and say, this is resource and material that we've verified, it's in line with the evidence base. It's got the heart.
I've got one, one further question. I want to ask about, uh, the use of Central.
Central.
So this is a, um, uh, enterprise-based software that helps with school administration.
Yes.
Now, the decision to use Central, is that a decision that's made at a local level?
Uh, it is, but what we've done with, um, student administration is we have, uh, through our IT directorate. Worked with a few providers that we've found schools predominantly use to make sure we can have. Value for money if schools choose to use them. In, in our experience, there's only a couple of providers that schools have. Uh, made the local decision to use for student admin and we have centralized to get better deals for them.
And what about class cover? Is that in the same bucket?
Uh, class cover is a resource that's provided, uh, by us for daily casual cover. Uh.
It's owned by the department, is it?
Uh, it's, it's a whole of department contract for class cover.
Right, okay. So all schools are required to use class cover?
Uh, no, we make it available for all schools. Uh, all schools will require casual teachers, uh, on any given day. And so, uh, we pay for the class cover and say, if you'd like to use that resource, here it is available to you. Yeah. And, and the vast majority, Mr. Diam, use that service.
Thank you very much. That's the end of our time. We appreciate you coming along and make yourselves available to give evidence and for the details in the submission. Um, if there are supplementary questions, um, they'll be sent to you and you'll be given twenty one days with which to reply. We thank you again for coming on today.
Thanks, Chair. Thank you to the committee.
Thank you.
Um, and thank you all for making the time to give evidence. Could I please ask that each of you uh, please state your name and position and swear either an oath or an affirmation. And if we could start with you, Ms. Glenda.
Yes, good morning. My name's Emma Skulander. I'm the Chief Operating Officer at New South Wales Health Infrastructure. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you.
Good morning. Uh, my name is Michael Gandy. I'm the Chief Procurement Officer for New South Wales Health. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. So help me God.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Alfa Damato. I'm the Deputy Secretary and CFO of New South Wales Health. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. So help me God.
Thank you.
Morning, everyone. Uh, Alex Arujo, Executive Director of Procurement Supply Chain at Healthshare. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. So help me God.
Thank you. We're going to start with opposition questions.
You want to make an opening statement?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Tudohoe. Thank you. Uh, I stand corrected. Would you like to make an opening statement?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Kane. Good morning, Chair and members of the committee. Thank you for the opportunity to appear in front of the committee today and contribute to this inquiry. I'm the Chief Procurement Officer for New South Wales Health and my role resides within the Financial Services and Asset Management Division of the Ministry of Health. I'm joined by a Deputy Secretary of Financial Services and Asset Management Division and Chief Financial Officer, a Junk Professor for Damato, Chief Operating Officer, Health Infrastructure, Miss Emma Skulander, and Executive Director of Healthshare, Mr. Alex Arujo. As CPO, my role is to provide leadership, vision and direction to the procurement function of New South Wales Health and to drive effective and efficient procurement, planning, sourcing and contract management aligned with New South Wales Health's statewide priorities and business needs and ensure compliance with the legislation and whole of government policy and direction. CPO also has an assurance role to ensure compliance to New South Wales Government Procurement Frameworks and New South Wales Health Procurement Policy and Procedures. New South Wales Health conducts its procurement in accordance with its obligations under legislation and whole of government procurement policy framework, which incorporates the New South Wales Government Procurement objectives of value for money, fair and open competition, easy-to-do business, innovation, economic development, social outcomes and sustainability. In financial year twenty-two, twenty-three, New South Wales Health spent a total of seven point five four billion on goods and services procurement. Of this, approximately ninety-nine percent equating to circa seven point four seven billion was spent with Australian ABNs. One point seven billion, approximately twenty-two percent, was spent with twenty-six thousand five hundred and seventy-five SME and regional businesses. Forty-one point eight million directly with Aboriginal businesses, exceeding the New South Wales Treasury assigned target of twenty-three million. A hundred and fifty-two goods and services contracts valued over ten thousand dollars were awarded to Aboriginal businesses, exceeding the New South Wales Treasury target of sixty-three. Approximately two point four two million was spent with thirty-five social enterprises. Two point six four million was spent with, with forty-five Australian disability enterprises. New South Wales Health operates under a devolved procurement model. Shared service entities, namely Healthshare, New South Wales and E-Health, New South Wales, lead tactical and operational procurements, including whole of health contracts and a small number of whole of government contracts. Health Infrastructure leads the delivery of New South Wales Health capital projects, local health districts and specialty networks operationalize statewide contracts and manage local procurement according to system needs. The Financial Services and Asset Management Division is currently overseeing a procurement reform program. The program has been established to promote improvements in governance, technology and efficient and equitable procurement practices. The four key procurement reform programs work streams include the following. The operating model work stream, and this is focused on expanding and empowering the procurement workforce statewide with additional resources, a new contract management framework, refined contract implementation process, improved governance and greater role clarity, all supported by the New South Wales Health procurement policy. The next stream is the New South Wales Medicines Forumary. This will develop a holistic framework governing the procurement and usage of pharmaceuticals to support optimum clinical and better value healthcare, leading to improved patient outcomes. The third stream is named deliveries, and this stream will transform the medical consumable supply, supply chain by enabling a more efficient and easier ordering and optimization of the inventory management processes. And also provide visibility in order to facilitate, to facilitate tracking of products from the point of receipt of goods at the hospital dock right to the, to the ward store room. The final, the final stream is labeled Smartchain, and this Smartchain stream is really about creating a single integrated system to simplify and optimize our processes. Procurement and supply chain will be transformed by improving how data is collected, used and managed by New South Wales Health, ensuring decision-making is based on reliable and trusted information. Through these initiatives, the reform program will sustain and strengthen the core procurement and supply chain ecosystem within New South Wales Health in addition to further centralization. This will enable a greater level of support to New South Wales procurement via improved data and insights. The vendor management system, so from a professional services perspective, New South Wales Health has also implemented a number of process changes from the thirtieth of June, twenty twenty-three. For the procurement of all professional services, which includes consultants, New South Wales Health entities must seek CPO approval for all engagements valued at or over thirty thousand dollars prior to seeking quotes from suppliers. CPO is also required for variations and extensions to existing professional service engagements. The New South Wales Health CPO has also mandated the use of pre, the pre-qualification schemes, even where these are only considered recommended under the Procurement Board Direction. New South Wales entities are also required to ensure that the supplier signs the appropriate confidentiality and conflict of interest undertakings and agree to the New South Wales Government Supply Code of Conduct. Appropriate contract management of these engagements is required and the New South Wales Health entity must complete a post-engagement evaluation before the engagement can be closed. My branch is currently implementing uh, the VMS or the Vendor Management System, which is the end-to-end uh, procurement solution for professional service engagements. And that system will really ensure compliance and automation of all the above requirements that I just mentioned. These VMS is in its early stages of implementation and it's anticipated the full rollout across all entities will be complete by September twenty twenty-four. Finally, regarding sustainability, New South Wales Health has committed to an environmentally sustainable footprint for future healthcare as part of the future health strategy. New South Wales Health recognizes its responsibility to reduce our carbon emissions, minimize waste and optimally manage our resources. These will have positive impacts for the health and wellbeing of our citizens and reduce the environmental impact of the health system. As part of our procurement sustainability innovation journey, we recently held a supplier forum, which brought together a number of our key suppliers and New South Wales Health representatives to discuss some of the key challenges and opportunities for savings and sustainability innovation. Thank you again for the opportunity to appear today, and we welcome the committee's questions in relation to this inquiry.
Thank you very much. And now we go to opposition questions.
You appreciate that that was a very expansive opening and I have uh, ten minutes and twenty-one seconds to ask you questions and I can't possibly cover the range of materials. Can I start by asking this? Local health districts have budgets which they are responsible for. Is that correct?
That's correct.
What's the, how does the relationship between New South Wales Health and the local health districts operate in terms of oversight of expenditure by local health districts?
Let me cover that. Uh, Mr. Tudop, as you would appreciate, the ministry has a function as Assistant Manager and as Assistant Manager, we have a particular arrangement with the districts and networks as well as pillars. And the arrangement is constructed around what we call a service agreement, which is also a requirement under the National Reform Agreement. The, um, the service agreement is issued once a year and the details contained into the service agreement include, amongst other things, the specific details or the budget allocation to the district for the particular financial year.
So is there a procurement officer in every local health district?
Can you recover that part?
Absolutely, there is. So there's a procurement team at every district, yes.
And the, the overseeing that procurement officer, there is the, the, the ministry uh, or the department has its own Chief uh, Procurement Officer.
So, so in essence, the procurement team within the district uh, would generally report to either the Director of Finance within the district or Director of Corporate Services or, or some, some senior executive within the district. Um, and they would have their own uh, delegation at that level, but there is only one procurement policy across New South Wales Health and that's what governs that.
Uh, so every local health district procurement officer would be required, obviously, to comply. Now, who oversees that? So, when, to actually do a, an audit of the manner in which local health districts are implementing their um, procurement contracts.
So there is, there is an internal audit um, function within, within the system that, and generally, most districts would have an, an internal audit group.
And how often does that take place?
I would have to take that on notice to, to come back to you.
Are there spot checks in relation to individual contracts entered into by local health districts?
They do, they do occur.
They do, they do. Well, how often?
I'll, I'll take that on notice and come back to you.
Okay. Um, in two thousand and nineteen, the Auditor General issued a report into Healthshare uh, which found Healthshare has a procurement framework that should support effective contract management, but it has not applied, it has not applied it consistently. In particular, the audit found that Healthshare was not applying key contract management elements to over eighty percent of high va- value orders, contracts it manages. The audit also found that Healthshare's contract management practices were limited by inadequate performance monitoring. Um, Mr. Arujo?
Perhaps, sorry, before we go to Alex, perhaps it would be important that we frame this as one of the reasons why we kicked off um, procurement reform?
No, 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 I get that. So, and in fact, I'm asking you to expand on that procurement reform. Yeah, as an answer to the Auditor General's.
Yeah, no, no, that's okay. But what I was suggesting, perhaps we need to cover the contract management that is led by the CPO and how that approach then affects, or if you want, um, address some of the challenges that were documented by the Auditor General.
Well, I'm in your hands if you want. Whoever answers questions, it's matter for you.
No problems. So just to expand on, on Mr. Damato's point there, the, the findings of that report essentially were not just limited to, to Healthshare, but I think what it highlighted is there were some opportunities across the system to better, one, optimize the contract management, um, but also ensure that the contract implementation uh, across the system is optimized. Um, we, we do a lot of great work in actually getting the tender done, completed, but then what can happen is that the contract implementation and management piece potentially is not optimized and, and may erode some of the value that we thought we would get. And this is the piece that we really targeted as part of the procurement um, reform program. Um, and the first, the first stream of that reform is really the operating model. And that operating model was really targeting how we can improve contract management across the entire system. And that included a, a heavy investment of approximately seventy-six staff across Healthshare and the districts to ensure that that contract implementation is being, uh, being, uh, completed and conducted um, to the optimum level. Uh, and then the follow-up to that implementation, easy ongoing contract management is done as well. Um, and then with that came uh, visibility on contracts within the system, uh, making sure that there's a repository for all contracts is being completed is also, um, is also in place. Uh, and then ensuring that uh, the reporting back of the benefits and value of those contracts is also visible to us.
And compliance with procurement policy, no doubt?
Correct, yes.
Well, um, at some stage, someone will, no doubt, do some sort of audit again uh, in relation to the manner in which uh, uh, New South Wales Health is actually, has someone read the um, the submission from the Medical Technology Association of Australia?
Yes.
Um, have you got any observations you'd want to make in relation to the recommendations in respect of value-based procurement? Because, and it goes to this point. What I understand them to be saying is that value for money, when it comes to healthcare, includes the best outcome for a patient. And in fact, uh, it not necessarily is price, it is, it is a patient-centered approach to value for money, uh, which they suggest should be adopted in relation to uh, procurement policy.
Yeah. Look, I couldn't agree more with you, Mr. Tudohoe. Um, ultimately, that's how we approach as well. So we, when we, when we think about value for money, because again, um, value for money can mean different things to different people. That, I think that's a perception, but the, the reality is very different from that. When you look at how we, how we evaluate products um, for, for use within, within New South Wales Health, um, the reality is over two-thirds of the weighted criteria is non-price driven. And it's all about fit for purpose, total cost of ownership, um, patient outcomes. So there's a, there's a whole non-weighted price criteria that, that, that is set. Of course, every category and every contract may be different based on its own merits and whatever device that we're procuring. But the, but in most cases, thirty to forty percent is only price and the rest is actually all non-price weighted based on the outcome and the fit for purpose of the product.
But there can be, i- i- in relation to goods and services contract, and we just heard this in relation to education, there are components, of course, where you can uh, concentrate on other outcomes, um, uh, including whether, who the contracting party is, whether it beats um, Aboriginal procurement policy or uh, what, whatever other social components are, but in respect of a lot, most of the provision of health services, it's patient-focused, is it not?
Absolutely.
And that should be the driver
Absolutely.
uh, of value for money. So if in fact, there was a direction that um, there has got to be thirty percent local component, that sometimes may conflict with actually delivering best patient outcomes.
Correct, correct. It can be challenging, particularly, particularly when we're talking about the types of goods that we're procuring. Um, it, it can be challenging in that, from that perspective, yes.
So if, if, what you would say in relation to that is it would need, would it not, to have a tailored approach for each particular department, according to the specialty that they need to be able to deliver?
That, that would seem appropriate, yes.
Um, can I just ask about uh, um, health infrastructure? Um, one of the um, uh, recommendations which is called for by the Nurses Midwives uh, Union is it, it calls for an explicit local secure and fair jobs code that outlines industrial rights and conditions for contracts and requires suppliers to submit to work health and safety and industrial audits put together, compliance plans and model industrial clauses in contracts. Um, don't you already do all that?
Uh, yes. Um, I think that the requirements within the health infrastructure contract documentation would point to the need to comply with legislation um, in relation to that.
You'd require them to
Correct.
Contractors to comply with the law. Um, is there any um, benefit uh, in terms of the delivery of health infrastructure? Are there a panel of, of, I suppose, uh, entities or contractors that you use for the purpose of delivering health infrastructure? And how are they actually identified? Or how do you get onto that panel for the purpose of delivering health infrastructure?
In relation to the building contractors? Yeah. Um, so health infrastructure has established its own panel of contractors. It, well, it is called a procurement list of contractors that it uses. It was established with the purpose of ensuring that the contractors were appropriate for the delivery of health infrastructure, which, um, there are nuances in relation to the construction of health facilities. Um, in terms of being able to get on that panel, it's an open e-tender expression of interest that is consistently open through the year. We do at least one annual review of the submissions to that scheme to make sure that we um, are scooping up any new applications coming through, or sometimes contractors request review of their previous submissions, which we do.
How does, how does the tender process work? If there is someone else who says, I want an opportunity?
Yep. So the link would be available on the e-tender website. Um.
Is that regular?
It's always there.
Yep.
And that, so they're, you're able to submit at any time. What we do is ensure that at least one time per year, we do a full review of the, of who is on that list.
I told you my time is short. I have about ten thousand other questions I wanted to ask, but you'll get them, no doubt, in the mail.
Ms. Boyd?
Um, thank you, Chair, and good morning to all of you. Thank you for your, um, your time. Um, can you clarify for me? Because I'm getting increasingly confused the more, um, agencies we speak to. But for instance, with health, um, it seems that we can have procurement through Healthshare, through health infrastructure, uh, through Public Works. We can have a sort of top-down procurement or we can have a procurement that's directed by the local health districts themselves. What, what determines when we, like, who's doing the procurement and at what level it happens? Is there an overall, like overarching policy for that?
Yes, there is, yep. So there's, there's only one policy, which is the, um, the New South Wales Health Goods and Services Policy. So I'll talk about Goods and Services first. Um, and I'll pass on to my colleague, um, for construction. So for Goods and Services, there is one policy. Um, and what did, what dictates who and how that procurement is conducted is ultimately the type of procurement, the threshold, um, of the approximate value. So, so up to, you know, up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, the districts uh, have that delegation to conduct the procurement themselves, uh, through their procurement team.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, anything above two hundred and fifty thousand dollars uh, gets referred to Healthshare as a shared service entity to have oversight over that procurement.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, based on a delegation from the secretary. Any contract which is a whole of health contract, in other words, if we're, if, if Healthshare is conducting a whole of health contract on behalf of the cluster for a particular good or service, so. The cluster for a particular good or service. So any whole-of-health contracts will be signed by myself. So the approved procurement strategy, the actual contract recommendation in the end will be finalized and, um, approved by myself. Um, any exemptions to the procurement policy will have to be approved by myself. So, in a, in a nutshell, the thresholds within the policy dictate who and how that procurement is conducted.
Um, so on that goods and services then, so if you have, say, a particular local health district, district decides that they want. Um, you know, a certain thing that actually another LHD probably wants as well, but.
Yes.
Um, that district wants to get it locally, um. Is there, at what point does Healthshare say, well, actually, everybody's wanting the same thing? It would be more efficient if we did this through Healthshare. Um, and how does that then impact on that sort of local or localized procurement at a district level? So how do you make that decision? There seems to be a bit of tension between allowing a district to do that local procurement. Versus the cost efficiencies of a bigger contract through Healthshare.
Yep, thank you, Chair. So the way that we approach the scenario that you've just described is. We do a lot of consultation with the system in relation to where the maximum benefit will be, whether it's a statewide contract. Or a local contract.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and we take into considerations in, in relation to, um, the, the clinical settings. That we get from, advice from the clinical, um, folk. Um, and also we take, uh, in a view of economically, right? The contracts that we're operating are at, at large scale and it gives us the opportunity to, to commit to volumes. Cause we also, um, which you may not be aware of, um, we've got a central warehouse that's out at Western Sydney.
Hmm.
And so a lot of the medical consumables that you would see in common use in a ward are all predominantly coming out of that one location. So, so what we, we look at is not only the, the procurement strategy. But we also look at the supply chain, uh, impacts in relation to whether you buy from a local provider. Um, or a, um, central provider.
When we talk about the size of the contract, um, the size of the contract will obviously depend on whether you've decided to do it as a centralized procurement. Or as a, a, you know, by district.
Yep.
How do you make that decision? In terms of whether or not it will be centralized in the first place?
Yep, a, a good example will be things that are really ma- um, appropriate to be bought locally. So for example, lawn mowing services, right? Um, there is no, there's no need to do something from a central perspective, right? Or even some local trade, trade, uh, requirements. But when you're looking at, um, highly specialized medical equipment, like medical devices.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that is where it's best, it's best fits to be bought centrally rather than, uh, from local, locally.
Is there, is that done on a discretionary basis then as to what you're bringing in? Versus what you leave out to the local health districts?
Yes.
Yep, okay, sorry, you wanna add?
So, so there's always, there's always, um, in terms of. How you come about to decide what that, what the benefit looks like by, um, having a. A tender evaluation committee, communities of practice that exist already, and there's all, there's a multitude of other procurement, um. Uh, procurement groups that exist across health with, um, membership from procurement, um, uh, officers or managers from across all the districts. And that does tend to generate feedback to Healthshare around, hey, there's an opportunity for this particular category. Or this particular service or good, have you guys considered doing it as a whole of health? Uh, and that generally is how sort of things do bubble up to the surface as well. So there are a number of, um, community practices. Or but, or call them, you know, procurement meetings and, and subgroup meetings that occur across, across health. Um, and that tends to really generate some of the ideas and thoughts around where the potential opportunities are as well, um, at a local district.
Okay, um, I guess health, you know, we've talked in this inquiry about how we have this. Kind of devolved procurement structure across government. Um, but then health itself is, I think, probably the most devolved, um, department that we have in terms of the, the fifteen local health districts. And all of the shared services. Um, what do you do in addition to what other agencies would do? To manage, I guess, the additional risk from that? Is there a? Uh, you know, we heard from the Auditor General that she didn't, um, necessarily have oversight of all of the local hea- health districts. Um, do you, uh, do spot checks? Or is there, I mean, this is one of the questions that, um, Mr. Tudor asked as well. But how do you keep, I guess, um, yourself happy that things are being complied with?
So, I'll first touch on the fact that our procurement, or goods and services procurement policy is quite tighter. Um, in terms of threshold and delegation compared with what the recommended policy framework across New South Wales is. So we're at two hundred and fifty thousand, whereas if you look at the, uh, New South Wales procurement policy framework. It's at six hundred and eighty thousand in line with the EPP, uh, requirements. So we've taken a very hard approach to say. It's only up to two hundred and fifty is what you can actually conduct on your own. The second piece is we do conduct a contract and policy compliance where every year we do run, um, a report to look at. All the, uh, the spend that is at a hundred and fifty thousand and above. Uh, and see whether that has been declared or, um, has been, uh, put into our co- uh, contract repository called Procure. Which you may have heard of before. So we do, that, we do as a ministry and within my branch actually conduct that, that check. Um, to ensure that, one, the transparency of any of those contracts and, um, and purchase orders. So someone could have actually raised a purchase order for a hundred and, and sixty thousand.
Mm-hmm.
Doesn't have a contract, doesn't have anything, but we'll pick it up. We'll look at all those purchase orders and see whether they've been declared, whether they've been. Um, you know, put on the contract repository system or not. And if not, we'll go back to the district and say, you have to upload these.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and that tends to sort of, you know, you know, bubble, you know, if anything sort of is unsavory, we'll tend to sort of bubble up. And we'll have that visibility as well. Um, and I'll come back, um, on notice with some of those, uh, points that I mentioned to Mr. Tudor Hope.
Thank you.
Ms. Boyd, may, sorry, may I just add a couple of things? One is that, yes, we might have a devolved, um, model. But, uh, it's fair to say it's highly integrated. And it's highly integrated because most of the things that we buy actually influence also how we deliver care. And we want to make sure our workforce is mobile and therefore we use items that can be, you know, utilized across the system. The other part I want to stress is one of the areas that we've been focusing on with the procurement reform is the quality of the data.
Hmm.
And ultimately that gives us an opportunity to run compliance, if you want, uh, due diligence. And that's what, you know, the CPO just mentioned. So that's where I feel that we might not need to have a, a proper audit conducted all the time. Because we have sufficient visibility having one ERP system. And what I mean with the one ERP system is from the ministry, we can see everyone's cost centers.
Mm-hmm.
Everyone's purchase orders, all the procurement practices. And that's where I think the strength of our data and the, the effort we put into the procurement reform to improve the quality of data gives us an opportunity to be on top of it.
Thank you. Um, can I ask, there was a, um, submission put in by the Australian Laundry Association. Um, that was saying basically there's been this increased use of single-use products, so curtains and gowns and things instead of laundered products. Um, how does that fit within the kind of sustainability goal, I guess, that you mentioned at the beginning? Um, and what sort of weighting is put on environmental factors when you're doing that kind of procurement?
Oh, I'll probably say my bit, I'm not the foremost expert on sustainability, I'll add my bit around. You know, what, how it relates from a procurement perspective and then I'll, um, pass to my colleague. Ultimately, there are certain products that, that can and can't be used. Um, uh, I guess from a, a reusability perspective. So some things have to be single-use. Others can be actually utilized over and over again. So it really depends on, you know, the item that we're talking about. So if it's a, uh, it's, if it's a curtain for a, um, examination room, again, there are certain requirements that are on that medically that we have to comply with. Um, and again, it really has to be a case-by-case, but I'll pass to Mr. Arujah.
Yep, so given that we, um, operate seven linen services across the state, we're, we're looking, so there's been a pendulum change, right? So it went from previously, it was a lot of moving down, down to single-use products. And now that pendulum, pendulum is swi- switching back to reusable. So we're currently looking at curtains and looking at whether, which direction we're gonna, um, go in relation to whether we continue to use disposable or reusables. Um, and the same goes with, um, other linen-type products that we can launder through our linen service as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But just to add, sorry, um, we do, we do have the appropriate weightings, um, as part of the, uh, New South Wales Government's. Um, policy with ten percent that's incorporated in any, any tender process anyway. So we do, we do comply with all those additional ten percent for SME and ten percent for sustainability.
Thank you.
I'm gonna pass over to my colleague.
Thanks, Chair. Thanks so much, Jill, for appearing today. Um, I just wanted to start by asking, um, when referring to your submission. Um, you talk about the evaluation criteria that's used in tenders. Um, I wonder if you're able to, uh, explain to us what that evaluation criteria is? Um, and perhaps provide on, provide it on notice. Um, and refers to each New South Wales Health Agency having its own set of standards. Um, what, whether you could explain, um, when you refer to agency, what that is as well, whether that's LHDs? Whether that's at what level, yeah?
Sure. So just as a, at a very sort of high level, um, high-level explanation of that. The evaluation criteria is really product-by-product dependent. So depending on what you're actually procuring. Um, there's, there's a, there's a, a, a non-weighted price element in there as, as mentioned, which is roughly seventy percent, generally speaking. For most medical consumables and items. Uh, and that seventy percent will be made up of, um, you know, quality attributes. Um, fit-for-purpose, um, any specific patient outcomes, um, that, that would be, um, delivered by the use of the product.
And are you able to provide that weightings, those, those weightings for us as the committee?
Yeah, we could definitely provide some examples for you on this, yes.
Um, and so does each hea- health agency have its own sort of standard? When it refer to agencies, is that LHDs? Is that health infra? What is that?
It's not by agency, well, not by district or agency-specific, but rather by product and category-specific. So really, it, 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 it's based on what you're actually procuring, um, and how you can make an evaluation, how the tender evaluation committee. Can make an, uh, an assessment of what product is actually best fit for purpose for that, for that particular scenario.
Can I just ask a quick question? Who decides? I understand what you're saying, product by product, but who is the decision-maker about? Which is applied to what? Sorry, not good.
So, so the tender evaluation committee is generally made up of, of clinicians. So if we, if we look at medical consumables.
Sorry, I just stopped you there because you said that the, the committee was provided with the criteria.
No, 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 the committee comes up with the criteria.
Okay.
Yep. So before, so before any go-to-market activities conducted. The members of the tender evaluation committee would agree upon a set criteria for this particular contract. And once it's agreed, then that, then the, the rest of the procurement activity can proceed where you actually conduct a go-to-market.
Thank you, sorry. No, that's all right. That, that, and so that tender evaluation committee will be different for different LHDs, depending on what it is that they want. And, and would be makeup of, you know, in terms of the makeup of clinicians.
Yes.
Um, but also, so it really, um, yeah, it, it will, will vary. Um, okay, thank you. Um, in terms of operational costs, uh, what weighting does that have? Um, particularly when you're looking at value for money, where is operational cost factored in?
So the operational cost will fit into the total cost of ownership. Um, ultimately, we can't have a short-term view of whatever product that we're using. In other words, we can't be paying a, a, a small amount for a product that's gonna last three years. Um, versus a product that can potentially last ten years, um, and, and not necessarily take into account the operational maintenance and costs. So if we're talking about, you know, whether it be lifts or, or HVAC equipment, uh, we do take that whole-of-life, um, total cost of ownership approach.
And so when, um, we're looking at, um, building, so, uh, construction, um, and, you know, obviously the capital costs. Uh, what weighting again does operational cost have for health infrastructure when you're looking at, um, your projects?
I think in construction, it's been, uh, an involving, uh, piece to incorporate whole-of-life, uh, whole-of-life cycle costing construction procurement. Historically, I think that construction and the model for construction procurement has looked at the cost of. The construction procurement itself, rather than the facility that you then hand over. Driven by the asset management policy for the construction sector and by a lot of the work that's been happening within New South Wales Health. Around whole-of-life cycle costing, we've been slowly embedding whole-of-life cycle cost considerations into our tendering methodology. Within our overall criterion for, um, construction procurement, there is a very small whole-of-life cycle cost consideration. But within each specific equipment procurement that gets undertaken, we are reviewing the whole-of-life cycle costing as part of the evaluation.
So at the moment, when you say it's, it's evolving and you're looking at embedding it, i- is it factored in at all at the moment to a new build?
Yes, it is factored in at the moment to a new build.
And what weighting does that, does that have?
So in the example that I'm looking at here, um, which is Tamworth Mental Health Unit. There is a one percent in the non-price criterion weighting given to whole-of-life cycle cost management. But the overall price. The overall price criterion is sitting at seventy percent and the non-price at thirty percent in that.
So when you're looking at one percent of, of, of the weighting, when you're looking at the operational costs, when you're building a hospital, for example.
Yep.
Um, the cost in terms of the lifespan is going to increase enormously.
Absolutely.
If you increase the footprint and increase, you know, the single rooms and whatever else. At the moment, it's really not factored in at all.
Into the co- into the cri- into the procurement evaluation, um, in a, in a minimal way, in an evolving way. Into the actual design of the facility though, very different. And so the, the design, obviously, and the progression of the design is a different element. To the procurement of the facility. And so the design progression and the materials selected through design, the criterion and the standards that we base the design on. Are very much taking into consideration the whole-of-life cycle cost.
Okay, and how is that calculated? Who works that out?
Um, in the financial impact statement, which is part of our business cases. There is some cost estimate around the maintenance cost of facilities and that is absolutely considered in the evaluations of options. Throughout the business case process in the delivery of an infrastructure facility.
So when you're talking about the maintenance, does that include things like cleaning the facility?
Yes, it does.
Include, you know, the amount of labor that's gonna entail to deliver meals.
Yes, it does.
Patient care, all that stuff.
Does. It, it, it's a full forecast of the facility cost at a point in time during the design and that gets updated then throughout. Throughout the project lifecycle to try and, to, to, to aim to forecast what the cost of operations will be.
And when you say it's an, an evolving area, um, is it foreseeable that, um, that one percent may change?
Uh, yes, I can imagine that it will. And I guess that the, um, one of the comments that we put forward in our submission. Was around how goods and services and construction procurement are quite complex and intertwined. And certainly a lot of the goods and services procurements that we're looking at do factor in the, um, whole-of-life cycle. Cost, um, at the moment and construction materials, I think, will continue to evolve in that, in that regard. Of particularly around the available data to inform decision-making in construction.
So when you, um, and that picks up on sort of my next question, you talk about, uh, there's greater opportunity, uh, within the New South Wales Government. Policy framework to provide greater clarity in what is considered construction, um, and should be proc- procured that way versus what is goods and services. What do you mean by that greater clarity?
I think Michael earlier, um, alluded to the example of a lift. And a lift is an integral part of a, of a building and a facility. And I think at the moment, the construction procurement framework has particular requirements for construction procurement. That we will follow as we're putting together the components of a building. But we're also within New South Wales Health trying to drive some of those whole-of-life cycle and consistency elements through identifying. Elements that we can procure, uh, consistent across the New South Wales Health system. And accordingly, some of those elements need to be treated as goods and services to be aligned. And therefore, we are at the moment within health infrastructure, using a construction procurement approach. But also considering elements of goods and services. Thank you.
If I may add, probably a clear-cut example would be, say, if we're talking about, um, an MRI machine or a CT scanner. Um, as part of that evaluation of, um, of total cost of ownership, the price-weighted criteria would be. Completely made up of the total cost of that, of, of the life of that machine, which would include maintenance costs every year, et cetera. So that whole weighted criteria for price, which could be thirty percent, et cetera, would be really made up of the total cost. Over the lifespan of that machine, um, and, and that could be thirty percent.
I'm just gonna move on, sorry, with the time I've got left to, um, to ask about the electronic procurement management system that, um, HI have got. For recording sourcing and contract management activities. Um. Is this data shared with any other agencies, including New South Wales Treasury?
In particular, the contract, the contracts themselves.
Uh, supplier performance, for example. You, you talk about it including supplier performance. Is that data that you all kept on?
Um, I might just take on notice to confirm the extent of sharing. Certainly across the construction leadership group. There is a lot of conversation about the, the performance, um, reporting and where it gets centralized. I think there's, I, I did note in, um, another of the submissions, there was a note around the system. I think it was Public Works who own, who own the centralized system. The system not, um, being fit-for-purpose or, or modern, cause it hasn't been invested. The system not being fit for purpose or modern because it hasn't been invested in. And accordingly, each of the agencies have been storing their own data. We do share performance information across the construction leadership group through conversation where feasible. And obviously, we're always looking to collaborate with our colleagues across the construction agencies, which we do through that construction leadership group.
But it's not shared in any formal way? You talk about by conversation?
Yeah, I will just take on notice whether we provide that specifically in the form of the data being provided into the system.
Just going to pass to my colleague for one final question. Sorry, go, Bob.
Mr. Nanva.
Thank you, Chief. Just a quick question from me. Given procurement policies, approaches and outcomes are inextricably linked with governance, accountability and how New South Wales Health funds health services in public hospitals and community settings, what insights have you provided the Special Commission of Inquiry into health funding with respect to different procurement settings that are available to drive more than just value for money and immediate cost savings, but leading to longer-term innovation, service delivery and structural cost savings down the track?
So, okay, I'll try and break that down. So we have, I have appeared before the Special Commission of Inquiry into health funding, and I have provided some details regarding our approach to the whole procurement and supply chain ecosystem and how we can actually add value along the way. And certainly, as Mr. Damato mentioned, data is crucial and critical to everything that we're doing. So how do we ensure that the end-to-end supply chain adds value? In terms of, in terms of looking at other jurisdictions, we do look outside of New South Wales Health. However, it's fair to say that procurement and supply chain practices and principles are fairly standard. They are obviously specific to the setting that you're in, whether you're in healthcare, whether you're in hospitality, they do differ. But ultimately, we have benchmarked what we're doing and, you know, we're on track in terms of addressing some of the key components within the supply chain ecosystem.
Okay.
Thank you very much, and we appreciate your indulgence taking that last question after the bell. Thank you. Thanks so much for being here today and for your submission. There will, I think, as per being for a shout-out, be supplementary questions, which we will send to you, and you'll have 21 days to respond. Thank you very much again.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, and welcome. And thank you for making the time to give evidence and being flexible about the time at which you give evidence. We appreciate that. Could each of you please state your name, position, title and swear either an oath or an affirmation?
Paul Dale, I'm Director of Policy at the Medical Technology Association of Australia, often known as MTAA. And I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you still.
I'm Andrew Merrich. I'm a Senior Contracts and Tenderness Specialist from within the industry, within the medtech industry, and I'm the Chair of the MTAA's Procurement Forum. I swear the evidence now about to be given be, should be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you. And would you like to make a short opening statement?
Yes, please.
So the MTAA is the peak body for the medical technology industry in Australia. Medical technology or medtech encompasses a vast array of technologies that have either a therapeutic or a diagnostic purpose and are regulated by the Therapeutic Goods Administration. These can include consumables, such as syringes and wound dressings, implanted devices such as pacemakers or hip and knee implants, and major capital equipment items such as MRI machines, right through to digital health technologies that leverage software solutions. Our members develop, manufacture and distribute all these types of medical technologies that assist in the diagnosis, prevention, treatment and management of disease, enabling millions of Australians to live longer, healthier and more productive lives. A major reason that New South Wales has a high-quality and accessible healthcare system that contributes to the overall social development of the state is its ability to procure the most advanced medical technologies. This was never more evident than during the COVID pandemic. However, as I'm sure you are aware, in common with other systems, the New South Wales Health System is experiencing long-term funding challenges with people living longer, the rise in chronic diseases and health workforce shortages. There is clearly a need to find ways to deliver a high-quality care that is financially sustainable. Procurement of medical technology is a key lever in addressing these challenges. However, New South Wales Health Agencies, in accordance with existing policy directives and internal capabilities, typically focus on standardising and aggregating purchasing decisions to generate savings. While this has merit, and New South Wales Health has led the way in this approach, it has limitations in addressing the long-term challenge. Procurement, if it undergoes the right reforms, can help generate the value needed to improve patient outcomes and savings across the healthcare system, leading to greater social development for the people of New South Wales. Looking to the future, MTAA believes there is a need to fully embrace value-based procurement, which focuses on purchasing decisions that improve health outcomes for patients against the total costs of delivering care using a particular technology. We see a role for New South Wales Health to build on its established work in value-based healthcare- which focuses on purchasing decisions that improve health outcomes for patients against the total costs of delivering care using a particular technology. We see a role for New South Wales Health to build on its established work in value-based healthcare by committing to a procurement stream in its value-based healthcare program and lead the creation of a community of practice. This community of practice would bring together all the key stakeholders around across the health system to share best practices, pilot value-based procurement initiatives, and ideally lead to scaled-up solutions. At the same time, there are actions that can be taken in the short term to help address the existing challenges across the healthcare system. MTAA members have endorsed a set of procurement principles that we suggest serve as a helpful guide to improve the baseline standard in procurement practices for medical technology. Additionally, the recently introduced New South Wales Standard Offer Agreements for Medical Technology, whilst beneficial in streamlining processes, embeds the ability to later include any government or not-for-profit customer across Australia in the contract, making it difficult to provide appropriate offers. We need to ensure the people of New South Wales have equitable access to highest-quality healthcare in the public system, and focusing more on value in the procurement of medical technologies is an integral part of the solution. Thank you again for the opportunity to appear before this committee, and we look forward to your questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And just before we do provide questions, I've just been asked if you're happy to provide that written statement for Hansard, that would be helpful before you leave. Thank you. Over to the opposition for questions.
Thank you. Thank you for being with us today. You're at the very pointy end of procurement practice. You're not in the sense of the ordinary cleaning services, gardening, delivery of infrastructure. Although there would be a component of infrastructure, I would think that does involve medtech, does it not?
Well, I mean, if you're talking about larger capital equipment, that can be wrapped up in infrastructure programs.
As a component of, say, building an operating theatre, there would be purchase of pretty high-end technical equipment as part of the delivery of that outcome. You heard the evidence given by New South Wales Health earlier. Do you agree with the evidence given by them that they are adopting value-based procurement as part of the manner in which they go about their procurement operation?
I think we would say that there have been signs of willingness, and there have been situations where there's been an attempt to apply value-based procurement. There's certainly a lot of talk of value-based healthcare across New South Wales Health in general. I think we would say, you know, we wouldn't say that New South Wales is radically behind. This is an evolving area, but we would say that they can take some significant steps forward in terms of thinking through how technology could be used in more creative ways and how the contracting can be used in more creative ways to actually produce better health outcomes for patients over the longer term, better use of, you know, more efficient and effective use of services, and potentially, and it was talked a little bit about in relation to capital works, but also, you know, the whole of life cycle. You know, can you actually think through the whole of life cycle when you're actually undertaking purchasing? In one case, we have seen the orthopedic hip and knees contract, which we made reference to in our submission. At the HealthShare New South Wales level, actually, there was a lot of good things about it. The problem was, is that there wasn't sufficient communication down into the local health districts of the opportunities that could be taken up. So just to elaborate a little bit on that contract. The idea was, you know, so hips and knees, joint replacement, that's a piece of hardware. The contract did allow, and Andrew could elaborate on this, did allow opportunities for LHDs to engage not just in purchasing of the hardware devices themselves, but actually to engage in the uptake of, for example, robotic surgery, potentially, and digital health or patient support solutions. And so while we saw a reasonable contract approach at that level, we didn't see LHDs take it up.
They may not have had the budget to take it up, though.
They may not have had the budget, yeah. I mean, budget doesn't flow with the contract, so that might be the issue. But also, we do consistently notice, I think, a disconnect between, still, between HealthShare and the LHDs themselves. And if, you know, you can do as much as you like with HealthShare New South Wales, but if the LHDs are not bought in, then it's not going anywhere. I don't know, Andrew, if you want to add to any of that?
Yeah, I guess. From what we've seen happening within other states, they've implemented contracts in a similar way to the New South Wales Orthopaedics' Contract for Hips and Knees. And we've seen examples where the contract manager from those other states will actually go out and sit down with the directors of orthopedics from the various hospitals and explain what the benefits are for this particular arrangement, where there is opportunities for rationalization of the number of suppliers they're using, uptake of market share discounts, that sort of thing. We just haven't seen that level of conversation, I think, happening at the LHD and down to a facility level.
So if you were designing a model of procurement, there would be some things potentially you would take out of LHD decision-making because they are for the benefit of the whole health system?
I don't know. There is an important tension that is not resolvable with a silver bullet between the local and the state. And I think it is important that there is, I mean, I think this is what was intended to be positive about this orthopedic hip and knees contract, is that it did actually allow for individual negotiation at the local level within the framework of the contract as a whole that was New South Wales-wide. And I wouldn't say that that's a bad concept in principle. It's that the implementation didn't work out as it should. So the contract set the guardrails under which, you know, negotiations could take place at a local level to meet local needs. But, you know, as Andrew was saying, unless that's actually implemented, as it appears to have been more successfully in other states, it just won't be taken up.
Who are the members of your organisation?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I should have said that from the beginning.
Are they all locally based?
So we have about 120 members, of which about 85 are suppliers of medical devices, and they range from startups to local Australian distributors, right through to global multinational companies who are working out of Australia.
And in terms of some of the specific items of medical expenditure or health expenditure, are some of those unable to be supplied by the local market, if I define local as Australia and New Zealand?
If I've understood your question correctly, I think it is fair to say that the medical device industry is generally, is a global industry on the whole. It is, we will, and this is one of the challenges during COVID, is the reality is, you know, 90% of our needs for more sophisticated medical devices are going to have to be met, you know, by, I'm using a rough figure, please don't consider that a precise number. We're going to, are going to, and we're going to have to be met from global supply chains. I mean, a lot of medical devices are manufactured in other countries, and that's just the nature of it.
Well, except that, if I could say this, that in relation to the COVID experience, in fact, it did in fact trigger an explosion in the local technology market. In fact, respirators came out, I think of the University of Sydney or Newcastle or somewhere, for the purposes of dealing with that. So we didn't have to source them, and we became the providers to overseas markets in relation to that piece of technology.
And look, we would absolutely support, I mean, we were a big supporter of the local industry, and we've seen some fantastic success stories, you know, be it Cochlear, be it ResMed, of device companies growing and becoming international suppliers. And I think there's a very exciting ecosystem here in Australia, and you're right. I mean, we have to make, we have sovereign capability questions that we have to answer. I think the important thing, though, is that we need to consider what are our actual health needs, what are our actual sovereign capability needs. We don't, we wouldn't support sort of discriminating, you know, simply on the basis of, you know, where a company is coming from. I think it's important that the right product is purchased at the right time.
I accept that submission, but if there is, though, a weighting given to local component, that would be, in fact, something which New South Wales Procurement already does, give 20% weighting. If it was increased to a 30% weighting, is that something?
I think where there is potential challenge with regards to this in the medical devices space is that it does come at a significant expense to suppliers to look at manufacturing and going through the Therapeutic Goods Administration's registration process to manufacture devices within Australia and within New Zealand. So that is certainly one of the barriers that we have with regards to.
But wouldn't overseas, wouldn't international competitors or providers have to comply with the same TGO requirements?
Yes.
So it's an expense for them as well?
It's an expense for them as well. But it's the upfront expense and the time it takes to go through that process with the TGA as well.
How difficult is it for a startup to, in fact, gain access to the delivery of high-end technology to the health industry?
As in, how hard is it for them to bring a product and say, get it on a government contract or the like? Yeah, I mean, it's not easy. And of course, inevitably, the more we think about reforming procurement approaches, inevitably, they become more complex, you know, for good reasons. I mean, sustainability is just an example of that, where I think we would all want to see more sustainable supply. And yet, at the same time, the more you introduce those things, the greater the barriers to actually, and small, you know, small companies are going to struggle in the main to meet those requirements. So, I mean, a startup by definition is pre-revenue, but I guess if you're talking about a company that...
Even small.
Yeah, yeah, is small, it's got one product, and we certainly have those members who really have only got one or two products. I mean, they consistently tell us that it's difficult to meet all of the requirements. And, you know, for example, you know, while a larger company might consider that the insurance requirements, you know, they'll just, they'll pay it and move on, even if they think they're excessive, which, you know, sometimes we do. A smaller company says, well, that's a really big deal.
So does e-tendering, though, work as an opportunity for small to medium enterprises to actually get contracts with HealthShare and New South Wales Health?
Yeah, I think one of the, when our smaller members report the challenges to us, one of the challenges that they have is, you know, understandably, there is a request to make an offering of many devices across, you know, a whole portfolio area. And the smaller you are, the harder it is to actually do that. And so if you have two products, for example, and yet the contract is for a whole, you know, across a whole spectrum of areas, it's difficult to, you can't put a whole proposition, you know, before HealthShare New South Wales to meet the requirements of that tender. You're saying, I've got two products to offer, but there are many parts of your tender which I can't fulfill. Whereas a larger company obviously is able to spread the port, you know, they have a broader portfolio. And so I think that is something, so along with the complexity, that's frequently reported as a challenge.
Just one last question. There is a proposal to make contracts much more transparent in terms of seeing who wins tenders or who doesn't win tenders. What do you say about that in terms of the commerciality of the manner in which your members operate in? If there was more transparency in relation to the contract tendering and the contract acceptance?
Yeah, so certainly within other states, that information is made publicly available through the tendering portals. Obviously, things like pricing and the commercial side of things is kept confidential, but there would be an overall contract value that's attributed. And in the event of a contract being awarded to a panel, the names of the suppliers that have been awarded onto that particular panel arrangement is made publicly available. So Queensland, Western Australia, Northern Territory.
You would not want the amount of the actual?
The overall contract value for something like it, because with a panel arrangement, there's generally no commitment to volume in there. But at a line-by-line pricing, certainly, that's commercially sensitive information.
Thank you very much. Ms Boyd?
Thank you, Chair. Just a couple of very basic questions, I guess. So when we were speaking with the health representatives earlier, they were talking about the different levels at which procurement would occur. And I'm particularly interested in sort of when something gets decided by a local health district versus when something gets decided at a HealthShare level. How does that work when we're talking about this, you know, what is ordinarily quite expensive technology? Do you have many situations where a particular local health district wants to have that technology, but HealthShare as a whole is not convinced? How does that play out?
I think it's more a, the challenges we've seen have been from a resourcing perspective in terms of being able to run a statewide tender process. When HealthShare are running a statewide tender process, they're trying to get involvement from all LHDs and have clinical input with regards to this. I know from personal experience, having worked on the other side of the fence within another state, that that is a particularly challenging and time-consuming activity. And invariably, the need for particular technology is, it's needed now or in the short term, rather than having the ability to wait and undertake a statewide procurement process, which can take anywhere in excess of 12 months to run through the process. So it does tend to be a decision that is made, if there is no statewide contract in place, then they will look at running their own local tender activity, maybe for some things, you know, for example, like a waste management system in a hospital, like a suction device. You know, it could be $200,000 of capital outlay, but it's enough to fall underneath that $250,000 threshold that HealthShare has.
So if, I guess, so if there's a new technology developed that is a better way of doing something, and a company wants to effectively pitch that, so it's not something that the department or the LHDs are actively looking for because they don't know about it, how does a company go about trying to get a contract for that new bit of technology? Do you go to the LHD? Do you go to HealthShare? What happens?
It's, I think it's a combination of different approaches. So we would have conversations if we, for example, already had alternative products that would fall under the scope of, you know, that as an example. So say, for example, we had a brand-new endoscopy camera stack that had come to market that had fluorescence imaging capabilities. We may already have a different endoscopic camera stack on contract. As part of the contract management process, we would make the contract manager aware that we have new technology that falls within the scope of the existing arrangement, and would then work on the process of putting forward a submission to be considered for a clinical evaluation to add to contract.
But that, does that then sort of benefit, I guess, incumbents, people who already have a contract for that particular technology? What happens if you've, if you're a competing company that has a different technology? How do you sort of get in to pitch?
So, and this does happen to smaller companies sometimes, too, that might have more niche products as well. I mean, and I was a little surprised they didn't mention it, because I don't want to explain, you know, for New South Wales Health what their own policies are, but they do have essentially, and I would need to go back and get the correct terminology, but essentially, a new technology framework or a new technology policy where if LHDs are interested, you know, if one or more LHDs are actually interested in a new technology that's not being routinely used, that they do have the ability to, you know, firstly, they have guidance on how to look at that locally, and they do have the ability to escalate the evaluation of that and notify New South Wales Health. It's actually not, I believe, HealthShare New South Wales. I think it's the Agency for Clinical Innovation, Um and so you would have, um a- and inevitably, the conversation starts with clinicians, alright? Now, you have to have clinicians who say, I understand this technology and I want to trial it, I want to, I want to begin using it. Um it's certainly not appropriate to to stick it under a statewide contract at that point. Um it it because you you you're not looking at widespread use, you're looking at the process of of evaluating, uptake. You know, taking it up, I think what happens is that if it is a technology of broader interest, it's more likely to be elevated to to the state. You know, the focus of the state.
Hmm.
I think, you know, if I understand the process correctly, if it's going to exceed the two thousand and fifty thousand dollar number, Healthshare is still going to run an. Or or the um New South Wales Health is going to run a run a view over it before it's actually purchased. But that's a different thing to actually saying we're going to make a whole statewide contract about it, so.
Yep.
Um there is meant to be flexibility in that and I think in general, our industry welcomes the fact that there is this opportunity for a bottom up approach. You know, for clinicians to say, yeah, I've I've seen this and our devices are very, very um close to the clinician. I mean, the clinician themselves has to be absolutely, often has to be absolutely persuaded that they want to use it. Because they're the ones who might be putting it into the patient or using it as part of surgery. Um and they're the ones who essentially say, yes, we, this is something we want to see taken up. Um but very often, it's still the L H D who's who's has to make the decision to buy.
Okay, um I'm really delving into something I don't know much about, so please help me out. But when um you have certain local health districts that have um research centres or universities or. Um other sort of entities that I guess are attached or associated within that L H D. Is there any, um I guess the L H D um having. Being able to sort of capture that technology more easily than other L H Ds, or are there any, um I guess, any sort of. Not anti-competitive pressures, but something that that might hinder um that technology getting further out? Have you got any examples of anything like that?
Yeah, I don't know if I have any examples, I think it's generally true that the large teaching hospitals um and and those places where. Um that are generally speaking, um where you've got um large numbers of that particular procedure being done. And are usually considered a centre of excellence, those are the places typically where any new technology will first be used.
Yeah.
Um and in and in some cases, they may may actually have even been part of the of the um clinical trial or evaluation. Or the process of actually generating data, or they might be part of even a post-market um process of gathering data. So, I mean, I think that's just inevitably inevitably true, that you will have these centres as being um. The place where you start with a with with using those kinds of technologies. I'm just trying to think of an example, I'm not sure that I can specifically, I'll look at Andrew in case. Um but but, you know, that would um uh that would be the case for any. Um you know, significant new technology, um again, it's so dependent on. Uh the clinician um being skilled, in interested, has probably seen it in overseas conferences in some cases. Uh and then also having the 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 right infrastructure around it. Um if, for example, in order to use a therapeutic device, you need um a certain level of diagnostics, certain kinds of diagnostics. Those would need to be available.
Yep.
So, yes, I'm sorry, I can't be more specific, but you would absolutely expect that the big centres. Um um the especially where they're doing a lot of these procedures, where they're probably undertaking a lot of research. They would be the places that you would see the take up of that technology.
So I guess on the flip side then, um I've read a lot of um local health district board minutes. So many, um and I noticed that sort of um very, I guess, proud relationship between. Um the the health district management and its centres. You know, it's um sort of academic and teaching hospitals and things, is there um a potential for bias for. That local health district to then adopt technologies created within its own district um to the exclusion of competing products?
I think, can I just make sure that I understand you, are you talking about maybe technologies that they themselves have developed locally? Uh is that what you mean?
Yeah, pretty much.
Uh ye- yes, um. Um I I just want to, you know, say that 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 as suppliers of products, um that's typically not. Our, the situation with our with our products, I mean, generally speaking, as you would expect, our um. Our members are trying to supply a whole market if if they can, um. Uh and so I think that, you know, there is this inevitability, as I said, that. Technology does not diffuse straight away.
Hmm.
You know, and there is an element where that's the, there's a safeguard component to that. You you don't, you don't want, um you you um technology doesn't just work. Uh medical technology doesn't just work magically, it must be used, to be used effectively and safely, it needs to be used by people who are trained in it. And are close to it and familiar with it.
Hmm.
Um and and so maybe unlike, uh you know, a pharmaceutical which might be, you know, could be made available very widely. Straight away, um there is a learning curve that's involved, um and. And you you might say, well, necessarily that involves inequity of access, but you wouldn't want to diffuse the technology straight away. There is, um I I think, look, if 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 something is, um I I would just say that if something is locally developed. I'm, all the evidence I've seen is is that organisations are very excited to share that, particularly if they can commercialise it. Um with other, so I I don't know that they would keep it um to themselves necessarily. Um, yeah.
There's that tension, isn't there, between needing to have it at that clinician level and to be advocated for by the clinicians?
Yes.
Um while at the same time ensuring that those clinicians have access to um competing technologies as well, I guess.
Um, that's right, yeah, I mean, the the standard of care should be available everywhere.
Yes, yeah, um.
Can I just add something on that, I was just gonna say, I know Healthshare take their um conflicts of interest and their probity requirements. As part of any tender processes very seriously, so suppliers are expected to declare any conflicts of interest that are. Um whether perceived or actual conflicts of interest, so we as suppliers will provide details of where. We may have clinicians that have fellowships within particular hospitals, um make them aware so they're able to manage those. You know, conflicts of interest accordingly, um when they're running their process.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, thank you again for your submission, um the case studies are really fascinating. Um and I think the case study about preventing surgical site infections is quite stark. Um in that you've you've shown, you know, that there's a proven way of reducing um those infections. Yet it doesn't seem to be mandated practice, so I'm interested in your linking this to value-based procurement. Because it it actually seems like there must be barriers there because it seems fairly common sense, whether you use V B P or any other way. It seems like a common sense, so I wondered, I know you've suggested a V P, V B P approach to to overcoming it, but I wonder. If looking at it the other way, what are the barriers do you think that mean it hasn't been adopted, you know, as a procurement option overall?
I think, um so, um. One of the challenges, I think, excuse me, um is measurement. Um and we would wholeheartedly in- endorse the statements of of the of the witnesses from New South Wales Health. That that the ability to measure um and to be confident uh that um you are getting the benefit you hope for. Is really, really important and I think it's very exciting, I mean, we're really at a. At an exciting threshold in terms of the healthcare system because I think we are finally getting to a place, there's still a lot of barriers. But we are getting to the place where we can um track much more effectively what's going on in the healthcare system. And we're very supportive of the investment in the in the in the single um patient record that has occurred in New South Wales. Um and so, um so there are situations where it may be, it's not clear. As to whether the the outcome that you hope to get will be achieved, um and in that case, you do want to be able to measure and and get to the end. And so, yeah, that, um we thought this would happen and it did happen, you know, or it didn't. Now, there are situations where it doesn't need to go that far, there are plenty of situations where you say, look, the evidence is well understood. The opportunity is here, um what we need to do is not um take a short-termist view. Um to to take the lowest price, but rather recognise that we invest, that we should invest in. You know, frankly, a higher priced product that nonetheless generates benefits through the system. Um and you you know, I think cost does become a barrier sometimes, I mean, I think. Uh and and you know, it's even been been captured in um. Uh it in a study looking at the N H S, the National Health Service in the U K. Um and this happens here too, you get top-down directives to save X dollars, um you know, by next year. Um and um this particular study, which I'd be happy to provide to the committee if if that's of interest.
Yes, please.
Uh you you know, it talked about how that changed everyone's behaviours within the system and suddenly value-based procurement was put on the shelf.
Mm-hmm.
Because they had an immediate imperative to save money, now saving money is a good thing. Um where you can do it um without compromising longer-term value, compromising patient outcomes. But I think, um you know, the reality is that can be a barrier and sometimes you have to spend more to get a better result. And save money over the longer term and the system is, we we, I mean, many have talked about this and we would add 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 our. Um endorsement of this statement, the system is not funded to innovate. Generally speaking, the system is not funded to innovate, uh and so purchasing by sort of giving just a haircut. Uh you you know, it it, you you can achieve some savings over time, but. Um it'll only get you so far and that's that's, if you were to take away one point from what we wanted to say, that would be it.
Thank you, I've got some more questions, but I think, Emily, Ms Saval, you have a follow-up question?
Oh, yeah, look, I'm just with regards to um the case study, sorry, with regards to the case study about um. Preventing surgical site infections and and the use of antimicrobial sutures, are these used currently in New South Wales L H Ds?
Um they would be used, yeah, I I I would have to take it on notice as to how widespread their use is.
Yep.
Um uh I believe they're not, uh certainly, we would argue that they could be much more widely used than than they are. Um they might be.
Private hospitals, private hospitals be using them?
Um yes, private hospitals would, um they they essentially would, um. Uh would um ha- have um widespread use of these products. I would have to get you um a response on on notice though, if I if I can, I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not close to it yet.
I'm just particularly interested in understanding, obviously.
Is there a difference between the public and private?
Yeah, and we as a state have an obligation to do what we can in terms of reducing um those complications.
Yes.
But but equally, um you know, we we are in a a health system that has been, you know, privatised in some ways. And many of these procedures are occurring in the private system, so thank you.
Yes.
Thanks, thanks, Ms Saval, um you mentioned that this the system is not funded to innovate.
Hmm.
And um I I note that you've made reference to other jurisdictions. And also in your submission, you talk about some of the things that New South Wales comes out quite well, so well, but better than other areas. But I wondered if, thinking about that innovation question and I about other jurisdictions, are there examples elsewhere? That allow for more innovation or that adopt a best practice in aspects that we should be considering?
Uh I might look at Andrew just on that one, if in terms of procurement side, I think.
Well, I was just gonna, excuse me, I was just gonna mention that certainly Queensland has, Queensland Government's worked in collaboration. With one of M T double A's members with regards to the development of a research and development laboratory at the Royal. Uh Royal Brisbane and Women's Hospital, um so that's a partnership in collaboration with Metro North Hospital and Health Service and Queensland Government. And one of the M T double A members, so that's a an R and D um facility that um has been set up in the last. Twelve months or so, I think it was, or eighteen months or so, um so that's an example where um. We know, we have other state health services, are working in collaboration with industry to to look at um R and D opportunities.
I guess I'm more interested in, we do have, I know there's a, the head of our research um area in New South Wales Health. Mister Levet comes quite often to these inquiries, we do have that aspect of it, I'm wondering in terms of what the procurement system can do. Because I'm presuming when you said the system prevents, is not funded to innovate, you know, there's the R and D which is separate. But what aspects of the system might be changed to assist or to foster?
Um so when we talk about the the system not being funded to innovate, I mean, the whole D R G. Um funding system for the for for hospitals nationwide, you know, is 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 designed to. Um provide, track an average and then effectively um provide payments to services based on the average. Um and of course, as you would expect, what behaviour it encourages therefore is to try to come in under the average, right? And that that's what it's meant to do, it's meant to encourage a savings approach. Um uh whilst not compromising care. Um but if you were to ask the question, well, what if we need to make an investment upfront to get a longer term, better result? How is that going to help me with my budget this year or my budget next year? Um we do know that there are innovation, there are payments that come from New South Wales Health. To if for for these kinds of pilots or for scale-up projects, they're not very visible. It's not very visible as to how that actually takes place and I think it would be a very interesting area for us to get more information. Um as to how that, as to how that occurs, but you know, what we have emphasised as an industry is that you can't just. Is that when new technology is on the horizon, funding actually needs to follow it. Um you know, we would look at the national um uh National Health Service in in the U K. And certainly not holding up as an exemplar in all respects, but nonetheless, if there is an assessment that a certain kind of new technology. Is worth funding, um then uh money actually flows with that recommendation.
Okay.
Um so I wouldn't say that across Australia that necessarily happens. Um uh in in any way that you could say, well, New South Wales should be doing that, but I think. Um that principle of investing and giving L H Ds the opportunity to invest. Um is is missing from the funding arrangements at the moment.
Okay, and just a bit further, I think, Mr Chuda, I've asked you about what an ideal system would look like and I guess. We're trying to get quite practical in this committee about what we can change in the New South Wales procurement system and I know you talk about. Standard offer agreements um at that L H D level and I wonder if you could talk through a bit what some of those challenges are. And maybe that's, you know, maybe there are some specific recommendations.
Sure.
That are, I mean, I'm hearing you about funding and I'm also trying to get very practical about the the lower hanging fruit, so to speak.
Um, yeah, so certainly, um we see as an industry, every state is trying to purchase and procure. The same items, goods, services, what we tend to see is there are six or seven different ways. Of going about procuring the same items and trying to encourage the states. To collaborate in terms of developing specifications, um we understand that things like terms and conditions is never going to. There's never going to be any uniformity, you know, regarding Ts and Cs, but development of a scope in terms of, if you want a widget. It needs to be packaged in such a way, it has to have T G A approval, it has to have certain requirements. It would make things from an evaluation perspective for the respective states so much easier. It would make um the burden on industry so much easier in terms of responding to tender documents as well. Um not every supplier that M T double A represents has got a contracts and tenders team that has a dozen people working for them. Um invariably, you will get a tender that is managed by one person who is also the office manager for a distributor. And they're expected to do the same tender as well, fill the same documentation in as a Johnson and Johnson or a Medtronic of this world. Um so by having some collaboration between states and um just a bit of common. So by having some collaboration between states and just a bit of common sense in terms of how you're asking for, you know, particular specifications, I think that's an opportunity that just seems really, as you say, you're looking for low-hanging fruit.
Collaboration with states is not necessarily seen as low-hanging.
It's not, but I know certainly there is a forum of contract managers that meet from across every state and jurisdiction. So there is one that's set up, for example, for prostheses where the contract managers will get together and they will understand, for example, who's going out to market for a particular item at any one time, so that they're not saturating the market by everybody going out to market for hips and knees at the same time. So I think it's just, from my perspective, I would see that as a really good opportunity that would benefit both New South Wales Health, well, Healthier New South Wales, but also benefit industry as well.
Thank you.
Chris Dove would agree.
Yes, I know. We've got lots of suggestions for federal consultation and federal cooperation, which obviously we'll consider duly. We thank you very much for your participation today, for being, as I said, being flexible about appearing early, for your submission, which was very interesting and gave us much food for thought. We will probably be asking for some more information through supplementary questions and we'd ask your suppliers within 21 days. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks for the committee.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you all for making the time to give evidence to the committee today and also for your submissions, which I know we've all found very helpful. Before we start, could I ask each of you to please state your name and position, title and swear either an oath or an affirmation, maybe starting with Miss Yates?
Thank you. Kylie Yates, the Chief Executive Officer of the Civil Contractors Federation New South Wales. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you, Miss Yates.
Michael Boyle, I'm on the Board of the Civil Contractors Federation in New South Wales and I'm also the Executive Chair of Abigail Ee Contractors. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you.
Thank you. Brent Croftford, the Chief Executive Officer of Australian Owned Contractors. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trevon Martinez, Founder, CEO of Martinez Group as well as Director of Australian Owned Contractors. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Would either group like to make an opening statement?
I would, Chair. I'll kick off. From the outset, Australian Owned Contractors is joined by the Civil Constructors Federation New South Wales and is most pleased to do so. In terms of procurement of transport and infrastructure civil projects, AOC and CCF is very much aligned in our advocacy and our policy reform views, with only a few exceptions that are understood and respected in our collaborative efforts to make the New South Wales civil construction industry the best it can be. Put simply, Australian Owned Contractors represents 16 mid-tier, that is tier two and three civil contractors, that are majority Australian owned and controlled. Our membership is specific to contractors who can perform projects of up to about 500 million in their own right or in joint ventures, but require a tier one joint venture partner to consider major projects above this size. I am also joined by AOC's Director Trevon Martinez, who is the Founder and CEO of Martinez, an Australian-owned, market-leading, full-service railway infrastructure company that builds and maintains large-scale railways and intermodals across Australia, New Zealand, North America and Chile. Trevon speaks for the AOC and is a proud New South Wales resident. I know Kylie will introduce the CCF and Mick following my brief statement. We are both heartened and optimistic that the committee can verify and recommend some very collaborative, positive recommendations that will reflect a wide range of the policy analysis within many of the submissions that were received, I might argue that were a high quality, including by New South Wales Unions and like-minded leading industry associations such as the Australian Railways Association and Consult Australia. We observe that there is a strong public policy basis and ministerial and parliamentary intent to recognise that harnessing the procurement power of the New South Wales Government through deliberative and considered procurement design and encouraging rather than restricting open competition for major infrastructure is legitimate and acknowledged policy approach. We implore the committee to recommend to the government in no uncertain terms the positive impacts on the social development of New South Wales residents where shaping future domestic industries is carefully considered in developing an approach to market. For the interest of the committee, this was further underscored by the Minister for Domestic Manufacturing and New South Wales Government Procurement just last Thursday, where Minister Husos said with respect to manufacturing solar panels alongside the Prime Minister, this is a new and innovative way of leveraging our government procurement spend. What we will do is gather together the spending capacity of the New South Wales Government and use it to foster local manufacturing opportunities. Continuing on with the quote, 'Countries around the globe are rebuilding their sovereign manufacturing capability and we want to be able to do that right here in New South Wales', unquote. In this sense, AOC could not disagree more with submission number 18 from the New South Wales ICAC, where their short snapshot on local content included what we would argue is waving rather the white flag and abandoning aspirations to a better definition of local content. ICAC could pick up the phone to the Commonwealth Department of Defence, indeed the Federal Department of Finance, as well as Christie Ponting at the Private Enterprise Australian Owned, to see some of the regulatory work being done to help overcome this. Some final points in summary on behalf of AOC to further highlight aspects of our submission that we feel the committee ought to focus maximum attention on. One is the relatively recent House of Representatives Committee on Infrastructure, Transport and Cities Inquiry into major infrastructure chaired by former New South Wales Federal Member for Benelong John Alexander. I comment and reflect that this was supported across industry, the recommendations from this report, including by no less than CCF National, Australian Owned Contractors, Consult Australia and the Australian Constructors Association. Those recommendations are available and I'd be pleased to reflect on those. There are tried and tested examples of innovative procurement design within other jurisdictions that have helped shape the market and lead to market diversity, particularly of head contractors, where AOC argues strongly that a deliberative approach and avoiding further market concentration and holistic outcomes would otherwise be perpetuated had some of this procurement and innovative thinking not been arrived at. The analysis includes MRPV's panel approach in Victoria, which I know from yesterday's testimony was not reflected on within the approach discussion paper from the New South Wales Government on productivity packaging, and also the Bunbury Outer Ring Road model, which AOC holds up as a gold standard in successful and market diversity procurement. The operations and evaluation of former New South Wales Premier Beridjiklian's memorandum for large, complex infrastructure projects is also a sensible framework and I reflect from yesterday's testimony some disappointment that the department did not have more to say on the aspirations of that and its continuing role in today's market. Lastly, AOC speaks very carefully around public money and public projects and our focus is delivering and defining better broader economic benefits through social procurement of these projects. So to that extent, we talk about procurement and in doing that I'll hand over to Kylie.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. I thank the committee for the opportunity to appear before you today on behalf of the New South Wales civil construction and maintenance industry. I'm joined by Mick Boyle, elected CCF New South Wales Board Member and President of CCF National. Mick started Abigail Ee with his wife Robyn in Sydney 30 years ago. Abigail Ee now has offices throughout eastern Australia and New Zealand and has grown to a team of over 800 skilled people, delivering the complex infrastructure needed to build better communities. So he has a wealth of experience across New South Wales that we're happy to draw on today. CCF New South Wales is agnostic about the geographic origin of our members' businesses, but they must have a presence in New South Wales and carry out civil works in our state. Our interest is building a sustainable and skilled local civil construction industry. We represent 400 members, all of whom are employers and proud local employers and 50% of whom are based in regional New South Wales. We represent the broad spectrum of the supply chain from multinational tier ones right through to mum and dad businesses. So to that end, CCF New South Wales is a state branch of a national body, CCF Australia, and CCF works to support a skilled, sustainable and competitive civil construction workforce across all states and territories and nationally. We do this because having a local skilled civil industry is central to delivering high quality infrastructure, well-connected communities and a robust economy for the benefit of all Australians. Our submission to this inquiry focuses on the procurement practices of New South Wales Government as they relate to construction procurement. Our view is the primary objective of the New South Wales Government at all stages of construction procurement should be the enduring public value of that investment and that should include sustaining and creating local jobs and economic growth by ensuring a viable civil construction industry. The experience of our members is that the current construction procurement practices of the New South Wales Government are increasing the total costs of projects for both government and industry and they fall short in delivering the public value we could achieve together. Some of the obstacles our members commonly experience doing business with state bodies is an apparent fixation on lowest project cost within government, deficient scoping of projects, incomplete tender documentation, unfair risk allocation, deviation from standard form construction contracts, poor contract administration and protracted delays and all of this, through all of this, there's a lack of robust evaluation and learning across government, no shared learning. One point to highlight is that we are asking the committee to take a broader definition of state government procurement to include all state entities rather than only agencies, which is narrowly defined under the state government's procurement framework, and to recommend that the New South Wales Government does the same in reforming its procurement policies and frameworks. That's because we believe a major barrier to effective construction procurement practices in New South Wales, both currently and for future reform, is the inconsistency and complexity across all government entities. The longstanding practice whereby state bodies such as state-owned corporations and other commercial businesses use bespoke procurement arrangements, despite being among the largest procurers of infrastructure in New South Wales, makes no sense to CCF New South Wales when we're considering how to deliver the best value through infrastructure delivery to the state of New South Wales. The examples of some of these bodies include Sydney Water, Water New South Wales, Hunter Water, Energy Co, Essential Energy and Land and Housing Corporation and others. While transport for New South Wales has been the largest government buyer of construction services in recent times, this canon will change depending on our state's infrastructure needs and government policy priorities as they change over time. For instance, as we deliver the energy transition and more housing stock for the state, Energy Co and Homes New South Wales will become larger procurers of construction. And should water security become an issue requiring infrastructure investment down the track, we would see an uplift of construction investment by water utilities as we did in the 2000s. So we want to leverage this opportunity to have broad scale improvement across all government entities. A major concern to our industry is the prevalence of project bundling by state government agencies and bodies, which cuts out small to medium tier enterprises, which stifles industry development and increases costs to government by having to deal with the largest of the large players in the construction industry. We believe government tender packages must be available to contractors of all sizes. This will improve government's internal capability to procure and deliver infrastructure works for our state. It will help grow our local industry by allowing them to compete and bid for head contractor opportunities. It will reduce costs to government and create greater value from infrastructure delivery for the people of New South Wales. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And just before we go to the opposition, if you could provide your statements if they're written to Hansar, that would be very helpful.
Sure, we'll do.
Happy to.
Thank you, Mr. Tudor.
Thank you. On...
On page three of your submission, of course, you set out a lot of the issues which you've just described in your opening statement. In the pre-contract stage, you've identified a number of issues which beset contractors. And the first of those is poor quality of information provided at tender. And you say that applies, does it, to New South Wales tendering processes?
That's correct.
New South Wales Government tendering processes. Does that vary across agencies?
It certainly, our information is that it does vary across agencies, but it is almost universally true that there is a lack of quality information provided at the tender stage for contractors to prepare their tender bids.
And to that end, that flows into, of course, the problem which you also identified is that sometimes in answering tenders, your members may take on unfair risk, and in many respects, they do not have any opportunity of recovering the expenditure which they in fact are engaged in in meeting the tender process.
That's correct.
So in terms of your recommendation in relation to improving the quality of the information provided at tender stage, what would be your recommendation in relation to that?
That there should be minimum standards of documentation required at tender stage. I might throw to Mick in a while because he lives this experience, but our advice from all our contractor members is that when contracts come to market, they rarely have been scoped efficiently with all, the risks haven't been identified accurately, which leaves, or they haven't been designed correctly, which leads to a whole lot of rework. And there's also a range of, and that requires a contractor bidding for the work to take on a whole lot of risk because they haven't got the accurate information available to them at the contract stage.
Do you want to add anything to that, Mr Boyle?
Yes, well, it is variable across agencies and even within agencies. There's not a uniform standard within agencies or within tenders, but there's often tenders which do not have adequate information, and there is often situations where the risk allocation is not. It's not possible for the contractor to make a reasonable assessment of the risk.
And is it presented as a take it or leave it approach?
Well, you have to submit a conforming tender to be considered. So in essence, yes. There's other situations you've got. If you look historically, there has been problems with design on some projects, which has added to additional cost. Unfortunately, I think agencies have been given poor advice, and so their solution is to, has been to make nearly every project a design and construct contract, so the risk is transferred to the contractor. But the actual cost that's created by doing that, you know, it's evolved over the last 15 years, is that government departments virtually design a project, they do all the geotechnical assessments and reports, and then they present the contract out to the marketplace and say, you can't rely on anything we've given you. And therefore you have to come up with your own design and the risk transfers.
I've got very limited time because the clock tips down. The New South Wales Government has a procurement policy framework. Your members, when they tend to fill projects with the New South Wales Government, are aware of the procurement policy framework?
Broadly, yes.
And what they're required to provide? So in terms of social outcomes, is that something which all of your members would in fact be embracing, Aboriginal procurement policy? Is that something that your members would be embracing?
Ah, yes, they are embracing that.
And that's part of your tender process?
Yes.
Are any of your members outside of New South Wales?
Not for CCF New South Wales, no.
So local, if there was a provision to increase New South Wales agencies or requirement that when they contract that they increase the local contact from 20% to 30%, that wouldn't worry you, would it?
No, I wouldn't think so. I'll let Mick answer if he has a different answer, because I would say our definition of local is within New South Wales, Australia and New Zealand. We're part of a national body, we want a strong industry, so.
Well, are members that you would be contracting for New South Wales work from interstate?
I think there's members that work, like certainly us.
Across Australia.
At the company that I founded works across multiple states and New Zealand as well.
So no problems with any recommendation that this committee might make in terms of expanding any requirements for local contracts?
No, the difficulty is define, my experience over many years, it's defining what local is and being able to ensure that that is actually delivered on during the whole project process.
Let me just put it to you, if you were doing a job in, if there was a contract for a job in BEGA, is it reasonable that the government would look for a contractor in BEGA?
Depends on the size of the project.
Yeah, but first and foremost, in terms of trying to prioritise connecting with local communities and delivering jobs and opportunities in local areas, would it be reasonable for the government to specify that they would look for a local contractor?
I think it's difficult if you start to go right down to.
Well, let me put it to you.
Postcodes.
When the bushfire cleanup was on, most of the contracting was done by local contractors, was it not? Even the civil work in relation to that cleanup?
Yes, yes. Many of our members.
Yeah, most of your members would have benefited from the direction that local contractors be used for the purposes of that cleanup work, would they not?
Yes, they did, and that's absolutely the work that they would have been skilled in doing. So many of our members would support the opportunity to work in their communities.
One of the considerations of this committee is to seek to make opportunities for contractors for more connected with local areas. That wouldn't be something that you would quibble with it?
No, we wouldn't quibble with it, but we would expect that it's still open to other contractors within New South Wales to bid for.
One of the submissions is from the CFMEU. Have you read that submission?
Yes, I have.
What they are calling on the New South Wales Government for all construction tenders to include a mandatory requirement that the contractor hold a certificate under a proposed New South Wales Secure Job Code, as well as a requirement to only use subcontractors who also hold such a certificate. The certificate could only be obtained where a commitment to offer employment to existing workers on wages and conditions no less than an outgoing contractor, among other commitments. Are you familiar with that sort of proposal?
No, I haven't. I haven't seen that before until this submission.
And what would you say in relation to that sort of proposal?
We wouldn't support that proposal. I mean, our members are, I mean, we are a registered organisation, we provide IR advice to our members, and there are currently workforce shortages across construction and workforce, so they are very proud local employers, but we would expect that they would be able to be trained and qualified in their role, but have freedom of association.
So they comply with the law?
They comply with the law and the awards and everything else, but we wouldn't expect to put extra bureaucracy or requirements on employers.
I'll just ask you one final question. You've identified bundling as a big issue for your organisation. Just explain, and perhaps both of you can explain what the issue is in relation to bundling.
The issue with bundling is that projects are rolled up into large values that cannot be tendered, that cannot be bid for by local contractors. And I'll let Brent explain in more detail from his perspective, but it really stifles the industry because the way industry grows is you start small and you have experience on a certain type of work, and then you're able to bid and you have qualifications to bid on larger and larger projects. I'll hand over to Brent.
Mr Tudor Hope, AOC's, one of our three advocacy priority points is to encourage all state governments and the federal government to debundle procurement packages to under $500 million. The reason being, at about that level, you attract far more competitive tension in the bid, and there are far more contractors who, of their own or in joint ventures, can bid to tender. When it starts to go south of there, the pool of tier one contractors restricts quite severely, and there are examples, and I include the Rosell interchange from some years ago, of quality of bid returns being quite poor and to the New South Wales taxpayer, quite unacceptable.
Thank you, Ms Boyd.
Thank you. Can I just come back to the question around the CFMEU submission? I apologize, I didn't catch the response properly, but do you support or oppose that recommendation?
Well, I mean, I'd like to get some more detail potentially from the CFMEU, but I don't think any more data, any more obligations on employers are necessary because there's a whole range of, you know, industrial instruments that they work to, and we don't understand that there's any issues in New South Wales.
You're at liberty to take the details on notice and be able to.
Order, sorry.
Just in terms of assisting the witness, they can take a question on notice and provide further detail once you've had the opportunity to review the material and provide a written response. Could I add, Deputy Chair, AOC is agnostic in terms of the industrial relations landscape that the state government sets of the day. However, we acknowledge the CFMEU manufacturing submission, particularly the point that points out New South Wales procurement policy framework emphasises compliance with international obligations, but it lacks clarity on preferencing local procurement. There's a strong recommendation in there, number nine, that we support. I think it's Trevor Waysey at the CFMEU who looks after this, to note just another comment on CFMEU manufacturing along the lines of your question.
Thank you. You both represent national entities, right? So this is, you're familiar with jurisdictions outside of New South Wales. I understand that both in the ACT and in Victoria, they have a fair job code, so this is not some new idea coming out of the CFMEU. Ms Yates, you must be familiar with those codes in the ACT and Victoria?
Broadly, but CCF New South Wales is New South Wales based.
Ah, okay. All right. So you don't have, okay, fine. I'll go to AOC then. So you're familiar then with both of those codes in the other?
Again, broadly, but AOC's remit is to focus on procurement reform, and with respect to industrial relations and codes, AOC doesn't take a formal view, other than respecting the regime or the industrial relations law of the day in each state that we participate.
Yeah, okay, but this goes beyond that, and I think that's the point here, and I understand that Mr Tudor Hope's asked a question along these lines of previous witnesses as well. No one's suggesting that people aren't complying with the existing law. What the fair job codes do is they ensure that we're actually treating the, you know, the workers that are, even if they're not public sector workers, they're effectively doing public sector work, that we are setting really high standards for worker pay and conditions, which is a, you know, a very common thing for the public sector to do, at least under, you know, a good progressive government. So I guess if that's, if those are applying, so the Victorian and the ACT job codes are applying to basically within that procurement framework in those jurisdictions to enable this higher standard to be set, then have you, you know, is there any sort of problem with that that's been identified for your members? Is there a, you know, why wouldn't we do it in New South Wales, I guess is the question?
That would be a decision for the New South Wales Parliament. However, I'd say in terms of standards, and I'll hand over to Trevon to talk about his experience, local companies, Australian companies, particularly compared with others, are very proud of the community relations and the deep rooted excellence they have in and out of social procurement delivery, whether it be First Nations, whether it be gender diversity, whether it be supporting local communities, as Mr Tudor Hope spoke of that example. And we are proud of the fact that when given the opportunity, we can excel and meet government expectations, including the one you talk about. Is there any particular projects, Trevon, where you've met and exceeded what was expected of you by the client in terms of local content and delivery?
Yeah, definitely. So, Mr Tudor Hope, you mentioned about setting targets. As an Australian business, born and bred in New South Wales, we may and exceed all targets that are set in any procurement for the jurisdictions that we work in across Australia, including New South Wales. We go up against foreign international tier ones who are, there's been recent examples where one company came to Australia in 2020, only had 20 people here in Australia, and succeeded before delivering any projects in New South Wales or Australia, secured $3 billion worth of work across three projects. Now, they don't have any experience in building its own capability in Australia, New South Wales, building a supply chain here in New South Wales.
Sorry to interrupt you, I think my question got hijacked somewhere in that little process. Can we just come back to the question about establishing in New South Wales a fair job code? Am I taking it that there's no evidence from either organisation in relation to how that's played out in other jurisdictions? Perhaps, Ms Yates, you said you weren't familiar with it, so as Mr D Adams said, perhaps you could just take that on notice to have a look at it?
Absolutely, it hasn't been raised with our members, with us, so I'm happy to take it on notice.
Okay, which gives me hope that perhaps it hasn't been really a big deal for companies in the ACT and Victoria to comply with it. Can I ask, Mr Croftford, in your opening statement, you mentioned the ICAC submission. Can you just explain what your criticism of that was?
Yeah, I'm more relying on a news article from about two weeks ago where ICAC, I don't think I have the specific submission in front of me, ICAC were critical of attempts by the New South Wales Government to promote or encourage local content as a form of weighting in procurement.
Right, I think that was perhaps a mis, an exaggeration or a misreporting of what the submission actually says. I think when you read the submission, it's very much around a more cautious approach in relation to, obviously there are identified risks when it comes to local procurement and smaller procurement. I didn't read the submission as necessarily saying that we shouldn't do it on that basis.
I recall having read it on that basis, so I'll be happy to take that on notice and clarify.
That would be really good.
Ms Boyd?
Yeah, thank you, that would be useful. I think that's all.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you both organisations again for your submissions. We've been talking about value for money, and I think Ms Yates, in your opening statement, you talk about one of the issues is that fixation on project cost is seen as value, and that doesn't necessarily sit with the New South Wales Government procurement framework, which is meant to be about other things like innovation and social outcomes. So how did you or your members reach the conclusion that it seems to be about lowest cost, and what should be considered in your view in thinking about value?
The feedback from our members is their common experience is that the lowest bid wins, the lowest tender price wins. So that's their common understanding. I don't know, we don't see the data, it's not necessarily reported, but that's their understanding. So by having a broader definition of really understanding what public value is would be helpful. And in our view, it should include jobs growth and sustaining local industry as part of that. that.
Okay.
I think it's, while it's part of the procurement framework, I don't think the aspirations and the intent of that framework are being realised in the, in the construction procurement processes as, as they are being conducted now.
Okay. And maybe this is to both of you as a follow up question and also perhaps you can address the value question, Mr. Crawford. We've heard a lot about criteria and weightings and how they're considered an evaluation. I just wondered if your members across both organisations know or engage with those criteria or know about them, or is there, is there transparency around how those different aspects are taken into consideration? Anecdotally, it seems lowest price, but is there a sense of how the bids are evaluated?
Look, we're, we're talking across lots of different organisations, so there's not one consistent approach. And, and I think a lot of what we've said in our submission is that it would be helpful if there was a consistent approach across a whole of government and agencies so that, you know, what's important is established and, and, and people can address that and work towards it and, and, but there isn't, there isn't a standard across all the agencies at the moment, and that's part of the problem. There isn't a standard contract. That adds a lot of cost. So every time you do a tender, you have to learn what this agency or within this agency, what this group is trying to achieve and try and assess the risks of that. Then as people, not just on the contractor side, if you're moving across, as our company works for multiple, they're all different contracts, it takes a while to prepare a tender to understand that. But even if on the client's side, on the government's side, people move from different agencies, they have to learn what that agency does.
Yes.
If there was a way we did work in New South Wales.
Yeah.
It would be much more efficient and save a lot of money.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Crawford.
Chair, AOC members take pains to point out that we can compete on cost, but we've got to be given the opportunity to be able to bid for major projects, yet alone have the chance to make the shortlist and succeed them. There was an example yesterday, I understand from memory, from the Secretary of Transport for New South Wales, who talked about the light rail in Parramatta, stage one. That project was held up to have some excellent virtues of which is commendable. It is the case that on the shortlist of three tenders for that package, there was not one mid-tier company who made the shortlist and consequently there's not one mid-tier Australian company that has the opportunity to evolve, grow and take on the experience of that major project, to excel, as Mr. Murray pointed out, for the stage two contract potentially. Trevon, do you have another example of New South Wales procurement where shortlists have been denied through the tender process?
So can I just, can I just ask, because my question was about sort of the value aspect and the weightings aspect? And it's, am I hearing that the answer is we don't even get to that to consider whether that is that?
In short, Chair, that's correct.
Right, okay.
On, on major civil infrastructure projects.
Right, okay. So it's less, you're not even worried about that yet because you're not getting there. If I could then ask you perhaps to get to where I think you're most keen to give us evidence, which is about this situation for tier two and tier three contractors? And if you can perhaps articulate as succinctly as you can, the connection between the procurement system, potential local content requirements, and why it's important to foster tier two and tier three?
Yeah, sure. As the CCF have rightly pointed out, aggregation or bundling is becoming more common and for the reasons I outlined to Mr. Tudohope, knocks out mid-tier Australian owned contractors from bidding. The reason being the risk profile and the bonding and surety that smaller companies have to put up is mostly too great for them to be able to bid at jobs above 500 million. The example we use when it comes to foreign owned companies is they often enjoy the experience of a parent company guarantee that is not available to Australian owned mid-tier contractors. In terms of the other parts of your question, Chair, there is no incentive and the history and the evidence of successful contractors in New South Wales bears this out for tier one who are wholly foreign owned in Australia, tier one contractors to joint venture with non-tier ones.
Can I ask a follow up question? Because haven't there been a whole lot of policy and premier, sort of premier's memorandums which say that there should be this partnering? So what's happened that means that that hasn't occurred?
So what's happened is that we would argue the premier's memorandum of some years ago has really not followed through from its intent in terms of market diversity outcomes. And the way to start that is to disaggregate projects to under 500 million. I know that Transport for New South Wales and Ms. Drover and her team work very hard at that and we have a good acknowledgement and engagement, but there are, there's a propensity for major projects when they're announced to be bundled up rather than, as the premier's memorandum points out, the if not why not default to start at the debundling approach.
Okay. So if I can, I'm trying to get sort of super practical, it's day two and we're headed towards it. So there's two things that I've heard that are, that are quite specific. One is debunk, debunking, if that were such a word.
Disaggregating.
Disaggregating, thank you, much more elegant. Thank you, Mr. Tudohope. Local content provisions of some kind, are there other sort of, you know, very specific initiatives?
Briefly for AOC, where we, where projects are above 500 million, we understand you can't build half a bridge or half a tunnel. We would like to see, in fact, we are encouraging state governments to adopt, encouraging tier one contractors to joint venture in their head contract party or joint venture team with non-tier one contractors so that public money outcomes can be shared, not just amongst international tier one contractors, but in locally owned businesses to use those experiences to excel and grow their presence in Australia and one day hopefully beyond.
Thank you. And Ms. Yates, do you have any specific?
One specific thing that could be done fairly easily would be to mandate the use of standard form construction contracts. They exist, they are just not used. That would take out a whole range of complexity and cost for everybody and build capability within the public sector and within industry. And related to that, if there was standard form construction subcontracts, that would provide greater clarity and would solve a whole range of those issues that we outline, which cascade from having a whole lot of bespoke contracts and a lack of capability to administer, administer those.
Thank you. One quick question to Mr. Crawford. You talk about, I think you talked about, one benefit of the Victorian Major Road project was that there was visibility and certainty in the infrastructure pipeline, very briefly because we're pretty much out of time. Can you describe what that looked like and how you got access to that information?
The, the PDA or the Programme Delivery Approach of MRPV is a panel type approach and it divides contractors on what projects they can bid for based on a size of project in between, I think one's between 50 million and 150, next one's 150 up to 250. And you actually have to play in your own pit, so to speak, and you can only bid for the projects in which you have joined the panel for. So it allows still competitive tension, but contractors of a size to have the opportunity to deliver slightly larger projects and take on slightly more risk so that they can grow and evolve and become larger companies. The panel benefit as, as well is that when you have grown, you have the opportunity to move into a greater panel if your aspiration is to be a larger business. I understand, or I know that the New South Wales, Transport for New South Wales has looked at and issued a discussion paper on a panel type approach in New South Wales. Unfortunately, I understand from yesterday's response.
Is this a productivity packaging?
Yes, correct.
Thing, which I only discovered reading your submission, yeah.
So Chair, there's two parts to that. One was talked about wholly yesterday, which is in and of its own, the committees can make their own calls on. The part that wasn't discussed was a mirrored type approach to MRPV in Victoria, a panel type approach. AOC endorses it very strongly and responded to the department in those terms and we would love to see a reason perhaps why that hasn't been continued or the committee's view to encourage more further investigation to continue that.
Thank you so much. Look, our time is up. I'm fairly certain we all have more questions that we'd like to ask you and we'll provide them to your supplementary questions. And if you could, 21 days, we'd like to have answers to those questions. But again, we thank you for your submissions, your time and your evidence today.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. And thank you all for making the time to give evidence today. I know that you all do so and it's very helpful to committees such as this, so we appreciate it very much. Could each of you please state your name, position, title and swear either an oath or an affirmation, starting with you, Ms. Crawford?
Thank you, Chair. Margaret Crawford, still Auditor General.
For how many hours?
For a few more hours. The New South Wales. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Ian Goodwin, Deputy Auditor General. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. So help me God.
Thank you.
Claudia Magotto, Assistant Auditor General, Performance Audit. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you very much. And before we begin with questions, would you like to make an opening statement? Thank you, Ms. Crawford.
Thank you. So thank you very much for your invitation to provide evidence to this inquiry. Your terms of reference are broad. As you would understand, the Audit Office can only comment on matters reported in relevant tabled audit reports. Our legislation also precludes the Audit Office from commenting on government policy. So there may be some matters related to your terms that we will not be able to comment on. But in that context, the audit reports that are likely to be most relevant to your inquiry are procurement of services for the Park and Pay app, which we tabled December 23, New South Wales Government Agency's use of consultants, March 23, internal controls and governance report for the year 2022, ensuring contract management capability in government, which was the Department of Education in June 2019, and also health share in October 2019, procurement and reporting of consultancy services, which we did in September 2018, contingent workforce procurement and management, April 2017, agency compliance with the GIPA Act, October 2016. Our recent audit on the procurement of services for the Park and Pay app, for example, made specific references to performance gaps in procurement, in particular, the lack of justification for entering into a direct negotiation procurement strategy, the lack of consideration for how to demonstrate value for money, the failure to implement key probity requirements and inadequate record keeping regarding key decisions and discussions. Our Transport 23 report, tabled December 23, contained findings in relation to Sydney Metro's management of contractors and conflicts of interest. We identified deficiencies in the oversight of Sydney Metro's conflict of interest declaration process. In some cases, contractors failed to declare their interests in entities that transact with Sydney Metro. Our report on New South Wales Government Agency's use of consultants, March 2023, found that agencies do not procure and manage consultants effectively and do not have systems for managing and evaluating consultant performance. The report also found there is a lack of visibility over the government's total spending on consultants as there is no single data source that accurately captures this. Other common findings from our audits include ineffective centralised oversight, reporting accountability and transparency for the total expenditure of public funds on procurements, lack of central monitoring of strategic risks and lack of responses to agency non-compliance with procurement requirements, variations to contract values which exceed allowable limits, inadequate record keeping and the lack of engagement evaluations, incomplete contract registers risking non-compliance with the, with GIPA Act, failure to establish the grounds for entering into procurements and contracts, including for direct source procurement, and failure to establish mechanisms to demonstrate value for money, lack of adherence to internal delegation processes, lack of adherence to key probity requirements such as identification and management of conflicts and accurate documentation of decisions and processes. So in summary, our reports over recent years have highlighted consistent issues with the oversight and application of procurement management requirements in New South Wales. And in closing, Chair, I should also note that in 2021, amendments were made to the Modern Slavery Act 2018 to allow the Auditor General to perform a risk-based audit of all or any particular activities of a government agency to ensure those activities are not a product of modern slavery. Those amendments commenced in January 22 and my annual work programme reflects this mandate by foreshadowing that we will consider audits in that space at an appropriate time. I'll pause there and we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Crawford. And Hanside might take your statement if that's okay. And I'll go to the opposition first.
It's a bit hard to prepare for, although Ms. Boyd will say that a lot of the submissions we've had have in fact footnoted references to Auditor General report, because one of the things we don't have in front of us, except for what you've just said then, are recommendations that potentially you would make arising from those reports which you have made. There is in fact, if I just go to the Modern Slavery potential audit, there is of course a Modern Slavery Commissioner in place, is there not? Who would, is charged with in many respects overseeing the compliance with the provisions of the Modern Slavery Act, is there not?
There is. And, and his role goes to putting in place the framework for agencies, you know, and the guidance for agencies to comply. If we conduct an audit, it would be looking at really compliance against the arrangements that the Commissioner might put in place.
So you say that the only role of the Commissioner is to put in place the framework.
He doesn't have inspection powers. Sorry, beg your pardon.
Good answer. Look, I don't want to comment on, more broadly on that, I'm just looking at it, I guess, from the perspective of what would an auditor general look at? And it would be compliance against a framework because we have to always.
But it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be replicating the work that the Modern Slavery Commissioner has already done.
Look, I would hope not, but you know, there are times where the assurance provided by an auditor general looks at things slightly differently.
One of the reports which you didn't reference in your opening was in fact the audit report you did into the procurement regime relating to the nominal insurer.
The one that we tabled yesterday?
Yes.
Yes. I could have mentioned it, but it was only yesterday.
Well, one of the claims which you were making was in relation to the manner in which service providers have in fact been taken on by the nominal insurer. And in fact, you were critical, as I understand it, of the fact that business cases weren't available in relation to... Have you seen a response by ICARE in relation to the observations made in your report?
Yes, I have. And in fact, that response was included in our report.
What do you say in relation to the response by ICARE? Does it answer some of the concerns which you have identified for the purposes of the criticisms which you made of ICARE?
I will pass to Claudia Magotto in a moment to talk to the detail of that. To answer your question, no, not really. They're saying, look, we did all of these things that we think are appropriate or were helpful. What we say is, all those things don't constitute or don't meet the requirements laid down by the Treasury Framework. But Claudia, could you speak to the detail?
Well, I can say that we obviously reviewed ICARE's formal response to the report in detail before we tabled our report and considered whether there was anything that we needed to take on board. There was no additional information provided in that response that wasn't, I guess, furnished or put forward during the audit process. So we didn't consider the need to make changes to the report on that basis. But as to, I would need to ask for some information or some more clarity about the specific issues that you would want to go to.
Well, one of the findings which you made is that ICARE did not assess its existing's claim management model or conduct a comprehensive options analysis assessing alternative claims management models before selecting its new claims management model for the nominal insurer. And they gave a very comprehensive answer to that. You say that that didn't change your opinion?
The Board and ICARE management had said that it was their policy to take on the New South Wales Government procurement framework in relation to the preparation of business cases related to...
But what about the McDougal review?
What about the McDougal review?
Wouldn't you expect ICARE to comply with the observations made in the McDougal review?
I don't think we make any judgment about whether they should or shouldn't comply with the recommendations made in the McDougal review.
What they say is, well, I'm sure you've read what ICARE says, but they do say, "The McDougal report and ICARE's evidence provided to the McDougal review at that time acknowledged the issues with previous claims model, the analysis done on the model and the need to move away from a single provider model." Now, you were critical of that. Prior to this, Janet Dawes' 2019 report explored this matter exten... I shouldn't have to read this to you. But it seems to be that you have made a finding in relation to ICARE and its management in relation to addressing the claims management model, which ICARE appear to answer pretty comprehensively.
The McDougal review is not a business case. And ICARE had committed to, with the investment of potentially $6.7 billion, to, in compliance with New South Wales Government frameworks, to developing a business case to guide that investment. And it didn't. And that's what the report is calling out.
Respectfully, I suggest you that possibly that that is a bit of a gossb, but anyway. What I perhaps put to you, Ms Crawford, is this. If you were advising an agency now in relation to ensuring compliance with the procurement policy framework, what would be the things that you would look for most in relation to ensuring that they actually complied with their obligations under that framework?
I will speak at a high level and again, I'll defer to Ian and Claudia. I mean, for a start, you'd be looking for total transparency. You'd be looking for absolute clarity about what's being sought and how proponents would be assessed for delivery, to deliver to those specifications. You would be looking for options. You'd be looking for some sort of competitive process, if possible, to ensure that you are making sure you're looking at the broadest range of options and considering the merits of different proposals. You know, those sorts of things. Ian and/or Claudia, did you want to add to that?
I think you've covered it.
If you were assessing, for example, value for money, what would be the definition of value for money that you would be using for the purposes of assessing compliance with the procurement framework?
Yeah. Can I ask you to take that one?
Our role as the auditor is not to make the judgment for management. It's to look at whether management has actually complied with the framework. So the first thing we would do is to see whether there is guidance or a framework. And there is. Treasury puts out guidance and policies. We would be then, to your question, be looking for compliance against that framework. And we'd be looking for, to the question, and one of those aspects of compliance, value for money is not the only aspect, but one of those aspects of compliance is value for money, is looking for that, to test value for money is that there are options. An easy way to test that is to have an open market tender process. But if you don't go down an open market tender process, you would be looking at that there are options within that and that if you're doing a more narrow tender process, that you're also complying with other guidelines, such as the ICAC guidelines. So if you're looking for an answer that says, "This is the definition of value for money", it's not. There's no single definition. What we'd be looking for is options. And I would also add that value for money is not the cheapest option.
No, I think we're all agreed that that isn't the cheapest option. Do you make any observations in relation to the manner in which agencies are accredited to be able to carry out procurement work?
We have made some observations around the accreditation process, I think, in relation to our report on health share in New South Wales. For example, we look at how that entity is accredited to perform its, you know, various procurement functions there. I think if I could summarise some of those findings is by saying that the accreditation process, you know, provides a baseline for how an agency should perform, but it also needs that central monitoring to ensure that agencies are actually performing to those requirements, because there's no point in having accreditation if agencies are slipping away from those parameters and there's no monitoring of that process.
So there is a central monitoring process, is there not?
The procurement board is tasked with that role.
Yep. In preparing the audits which you have prepared, do you make any observations in relation to the varying quality or training of chief procurement officers or those people who are charged with doing procurement on behalf of those agencies that you have ordered?
I think in terms of capability, our reports on health share and also on contract management capability within education talk broadly around organisational capability to manage what can be sometimes complex procurements. I would need to take on notice if we commented specifically on the roles of chief procurement officers. I can't recall an instance of that off the top of my head, I must admit.
Yeah. I was just going to say, I think that we haven't specifically made, in the context of the old general's reports, any comments about CPOs. What I would offer though is that obviously CPOs, it's a profession and you'd be looking, if we were looking at that, you'd be looking for, to make sure that they're professionally qualified. But the other thing you'd be looking for is to make sure that they've got sufficient seniority to be able to hold ground in making decisions around procurement.
What do you observe in relation to that?
Sorry?
What is your observation in relation to that?
I think we haven't, we can only speak to what we've done as an audit. I'm simply just making an observation that if you're looking for ensuring that CPOs are able to do the job and hold the ground to ensure good governance, sufficient seniority in that role is important.
And my last question is this, is one of the things that agencies are required to take into account is potentially local content. And you would be aware, of course, that ICAC made an observation in relation to local content. How would you assess whether an agency engages with local content?
I don't think we've made any commentary on the concept of local comment, or content.
We haven't audited anything that has gone specifically to that, so that's why we can't comment.
Thank you. Ms Boyd?
Thank you. And good afternoon to all of you. Thank you for coming along and giving us the benefit of your expertise. Can I just check? We've heard a lot about these evaluation and the weightings given to different criteria throughout this, throughout the hearings today and yesterday. Has the Audit Office ever done any assessment of the validity of those tender evaluations? So this seems to be, it's fairly open to interpretation, as we've heard, but also there's different amounts of detail on the E-Tender side as to what's gone into those weightings. Is that something you've ever looked into?
I think that goes to the comments Ian made before, is that we don't step into the shoes of management, where if, you know, we're looking at, has management set out criteria? Have they allocated weightings? Have they applied those weightings? So that's what we would be looking at to provide assurance over that, as opposed to saying, "Oh, you didn't really, you know, measure that correctly" or the like.
Yeah. It would be unusual for an auditor to sort of offer a view on the weightings. What we would be looking for is that there was a criteria established. I think we would always test the bona fides around that criteria to make sure that they're evidence-driven and driven to ensure the right outcome, the right outcome being good governance. But our role would be simply to then, once those weightings have been established, to ensure that that's complied with. There will be times, and I think we always recognise that, while you might do the weightings, you might get to an outcome and then senior management might take a different decision. And I think we have to be realistic enough to know that that is always going to be an outcome that can unfold. What we would be then looking for in that process is that there's a documented decision and that decision is there for transparency.
So maybe not on a per-project basis then, but what about sort of across agencies? Have we ever looked at, you know, particular agencies might be constantly coming up with a certain weighting for one category that is way out of whack with someone else? Or is there any data at all that can sort of point to whether or not they're applying these things consistently?
Not from our work, I'm afraid. But again, I would think that that is more a role for the, you know, the procurement board to be oversighting that sort of thing, to be looking for trends in the data, as opposed to the auditor trying to comment on that.
I had a discussion with Public Works yesterday where we were talking about, I used as a particular example, a project that one of the local health districts got Public Works involved in, where they were building a bunch of houses for health workers, I believe, in quite an urgent manner. And when I was asking about sort of who had responsibility for then checking on those contracts to make sure that the terms were being complied with or that there was value for money or whatever, it appeared that there was no one really tasked with that. So although Public Works held the expertise, that wasn't their job. And it seems that it's also not the job of the particular agency either, or perhaps they don't have the expertise for it. There are thousands and thousands of these contracts. I understand we can't check them all, but what would you recommend in terms of trying to ensure some sort of accountability or integrity of that sort of process?
I think we have done some work. Sorry, Claudia, going to put you on the spot. Remember the bus contracts for in transport? That one? Where we talked about monitoring of contracts?
I think actually maybe the, again, the audit on health share in New South Wales, although it's not specifically in the infrastructure space. It does go to, you know, using workflow processes to manage high volumes of contracts and the effectiveness of the, I guess, the inbuilt controls in that contract management process. So probably not directly to what you're inquiring about there, but I think perhaps that audit does offer some insights.
What if there was a, I guess, maybe it's not a role for the Audit Office, but if there was some way of doing, you know, spot checks, so not every contract is caught, but at least everybody's on their toes a bit because they know that they could be, that their contract could be looked at. Is that something that's been done anywhere that you can think of or that, you know, maybe in another jurisdiction?
It, look, on the face, it would be good practice to have some sort of built into your process of contracting, to have some sort of checking process. I think we've done work in different areas that is similar. I'm thinking infrastructure, New South Wales, when they do grants programmes, we recommend that there be a random spot check to ensure that, you know, the funds were used as intended. I'm not sure, Claudia, if you can think of a specific in relation to procurement?
No, but I think it probably goes centrally to the issue around applying relevant guidance on contract management and actually, you know, ensuring that there's a concept of, you know, value for money is the life cycle of that contract. And with health share, contract management capability and contract management in education, we're calling out the need to apply what does exist in terms of contract management guidelines and protocols. With health share, we called out at that time that 80% of their contracts were not actually being monitored in compliance with their own protocols. So I would just say, you know, start with the, you know, adherence with the contract management requirements that are set by the agencies. And then, you know, audit processes can come in after that to ensure that it's actually working effectively.
Sorry, you looked like you wanted to speak. Mr Goodwin?
No, I think you were agreeing.
I was agreeing. I was just going to just add that you'd want to not necessarily always see the Auditor General being your auditor of last resort, if I can use that term. Management has a role here and management has tools, such as internal audit, to do their own compliance checks as spot checks. And I would encourage that.
You've spoken in a number of the reports around this kind of, I guess, this focus on self-attestation or, you know, agencies basically saying, "Yes, we've done this", without necessarily doing internal audits or without necessarily doing any sort of active monitoring to ensure compliance. I guess what is a better way of doing that? Are we unusual in this regard compared to other jurisdictions?
I'm not sure that we can comment on other jurisdictions. Really, what I guess we would say is that the policies, the procedures, the guidance, the frame is there. It really is about leadership in the sector, complying with those arrangements and that there be some process of assurance over that compliance. I think if all of that worked, I think we'd all be thinking we've got a pretty good arrangement. So, yeah, I think that's what we would say.
And we do see that reliance in a lot of, whenever we're asking about these sort of, these issues where we're concerned about conflicts of interest or breaches of process. And the response is always, well, we have the rules there and we have the training and everything else set out. But what we don't have is that sort of enforcement element. And when there is, when it does, you know, there's an instance identified where process hasn't been followed, there's no consequence for that. Is that, I guess, yeah, do you have any comment around, you know, basically, should we be building up the procurement board, I guess, to have some sort of a, more of an enforcement role?
Again, I would repeat that I think the arrangements are there. It is about leadership and building a culture in the sector of understanding that these are important things. They're not just a whole series of red tape to be disregarded. So if the most senior people in an agency set that tone... So if, if, if the most senior people in, in an agency set that tone, public servants will follow that.
I think my, probably my final question, the, the follow the dollar powers. And I can't remember if I asked you about this in a, in a different inquiry recently, but, you know, they were, when they were legislated, there were some exemptions from those, I think around, if I can get it right, maybe even some that apply to contractors and consultants. In practice, have you come up against any obstacles in the follow the dollar powers? And do we need to sort of make any changes, I guess, to allow you to do your job better?
It's still really early days. We're using those powers in respect of two current performance audits that are on foot at the moment, haven't tabled yet. And we haven't come up against any obstacles, but it is very early days. You know, yeah, it's got a long way to go before I think that could, we could possibly evaluate to say, oh, actually, you know, we have got these obstacles that, that would need to be addressed. But at the moment, we're only, we have two on foot and they're working quite well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you again. And I wondered, just going back to that example, I think of the sort of internal audits and random selection. I think, I'm pretty sure that was a recommendation that came out in your, looking at safe works compliance function was that the DCF reveal random selected sample. So that's something that other agencies are suggesting here should potentially consider. Yeah, okay, so that was, that, that did, as an example, we were looking for examples, that's one that came out quite recently about that procurement of that air quality machine. I wanted to ask you about mones slavery again. Noting that the commissioner doesn't have inspection powers, which is why I presume it's been tasked to your office. And you mentioned, and I know I've heard you talk about it before in other hearings. And you did mention that it's, it's part of an ongoing plan of work. And I just wondered if there had been any consideration, because it's so tied to procurement, of the aspects or factors or general approach that might be taken. I understand it hasn't been done yet, but has there been consideration of how that might be approached?
I'm not sure I quite understand your question. Are you saying have, have we made any suggestions about how or?
More, more have you considered where you're gonna look and what you're gonna do? And I know it hasn't, it's part of the plan, it hasn't been done yet.
Okay, okay. Look, no, I think that'll be a matter for the next audit general to tackle. We have been watching and working, you know, with the commission over many years now, really. It was only late last year that specific guidance was provided to agencies. So it is really only now that I think we've got some framework that we can start to audit against. So we have foreshadowed that work in our programme. But again, that will all be a matter for the next audit general to decide on whether to do it or, you know, when.
And just a very general question arising from that. With it, with a new sort of system, a new policy, a new framework, what's a reasonable time to let it, for implementation before you start trying to audit?
It, it depends on the nature of the audit. And again, I might ask Ian to speak to this if you wouldn't mind. Because there are, we prefer to audit against a, a well-established frame. But there, there are types of audits that can be done, which are sort of like, almost like in flight. But Ian, would you like to speak to that?
Yeah, thanks. It, it's, it's a little bit like answering the question of how long is a piece of string?
Sure.
Not to be unhelpful. I think you would, as a, at a minimum, you'd wanna see 12 months, at a minimum, of the framework that's settled into place. The way the auditor general selects the topics that we would then audit though, is always gonna be based around performance gaps. So performance gaps might dictate an acceleration of that, if the, if the performance gap became identified. It, it may dictate a slowness on it, to say that the system is, is actually bedding it in and working quite well. So we will continue, as part of the, the way we develop the audit work programme, through Claudia's team and the financial audit teams, we will monitor that and then respond if there's a performance gap, as to whether we need to accelerate or, or let, let the system continue to bed it down. But at a minimum, you'd wanna give a solid 12 months.
Okay, solid 12 months. And there's sort of criteria around prioritisation that then gets applied, makes sense?
Yeah, so I mean, the audit general's only, for performance order, only has about seven cents per $1,000 of transaction spend. So it is a fairly judicious, judicious consideration. When the mandate came in for modern slavery, there was into supplementation of resources for the audit. So we have to consider in the broader of the audit programme.
Of course, yeah, thank you for that. One of the themes that came out of the consultant's report, but it's come out of a lot of the other submissions to this inquiry, has been about data. And I wondered, you talk a lot about monitoring and needing to monitor and that being part of the process, but I wonder if you had some comments on the role of data and how we collect it in terms of ensuring a more robust compliance?
Claudia, did you wish to speak to that because it was a key focus in our audit of consultants?
Yeah, so I think, I think a lot of the commentary around data in the consultant's report goes to collating the, the total spend. And it talks about the lack of visibility of a total, you know, source of truth number about the total spend of, of consulting, on consultants across the sector, which we were able to estimate, you know, being about $1 billion between 2018 and 22 across 10,000 engagements. And for, for our purposes, you know, we triangulated various sources of data to identify the trajectory of spending on consultants across the sector and ultimately landed on, you know, pulling information out of annual, individual annual reports to, to reach that amount. So I think that probably goes, there would, there would presumably be similar issues across schemes, various of the schemes, for example, you know, contingent labour and, and so on about, you know, how much is government spending on these programmes? But the, the learning from that report in particular is that there was no central visibility. But in response, I understand that, that TCO had taken forward the recommendation to, to develop up that consolidated picture using our report as a baseline there.
And just quickly, just one last one, again, it might be to you, again, about the consultant's report. Because, and we, we have had questions asking about central monitoring, self-adestation, that kind of thing. And in your consultant's report, you do talk about New South Wales procurement within Treasury. Should monitor strategic risks and agency compliance with New South Wales procurement policies, et cetera? And I wondered, did, did you find any level of oversight from New South Wales procurement of those things? Or was that completely absent?
I think it's probably hard to be nuanced there because it was, because we looked at 10 individual agencies there. There's probably an answer that relates to each agency in each, in each case in terms of how their, their particular systems were set up and procurement boards' visibility of those systems. So I could probably take the detail on that one away and come back to your notice.
That would be good if, if you could, that would be excellent. Thank you.
Sure.
I'm gonna pass over to my colleague.
Thanks. You touched on the contingent labour scheme in your previous answer. This sort of extensive commentary in the ICAC submission to this inquiry about labour hire obviously raising a number of issues that go to the sort of opacity of the scheme, issues around subverting recruitment arrangements. ICAC don't make any specific recommendations about what, what should be done to address some of these issues. They're not necessarily explicit corruption concerns, but in terms of prudent public management, they are obviously issues that fall within your ambit. I wanted to ask about the idea that perhaps we need, do we need a separate set of arrangements for labour hire? Take it out of the procurement framework and put it into a specific or separate set of guidance? And is it appropriate that that be done by an agency like the Public Service Commission that has oversight of the workforce needs of the whole sector? And therefore can take a holistic view of where contingent labour fits into an overarching workforce plan?
Okay, I'm not sure that we can answer your, some of your direct questions. Other than to say a couple of things, that very early report that we did, I can't remember.
2017?
2017, did comment on the lack of workforce planning. It looked at contract, the, the employment of contractors in, in the context of a, of poor workforce planning. So there is definitely that linkage. Back then too, though, there was an awful lot of work going on about a development of a whole government tool and, you know, a, a contract for around labour hire, which at the time we were quite positive about. But I think it's just not, not really fulfilled the early promise of that scheme. I'm not sure that it matters where it sits. It really is, again, about having, you know, a good process and, and people complying with that process.
There is an incentive though, isn't there? If it sits with procurement New South Wales, that the bigger the scheme, the more of the sort of administrative cut that they get. They're sort of incentivised to actually have the scheme grow rather than contain that. What do you say about that kind of perverse incentive operating system?
I couldn't offer an opinion because it's not something that we have audited.
Okay, thank you. Ms Savile?
Thank you. Just a final one from me. In terms of, you mentioned earlier in your remarks, the framework that, that exists sort of being sound. And then talked about, you know, that the role and function of the auditor general is the audit of last resort, which I quite liked. In terms of the internal audits that are being done within agencies, does the audit office have any role and have you audited any audits, for example?
Auditing audits.
Look, our role is usually as colleagues, you know, or we're the, we come in as external. The internal is, as its name suggests, internal reporting to management. But certainly our, our auditors do consult with internal audit and take into account work that they have done. And we also look at the work that internal audit has done in, when we frame our performance audit plan. Again, to, not so much to avoid overlap, but to build on in, you know, the work that agencies have done themselves. I don't think that we've audited internal auditors, have we?
No, we've, what, not, not audited the internal audit function per se, but we would work with internal audit if it, if it was relevant. So as, as your general said, in our financial audit work, if internal audit are doing work in the payroll area or even in procurement, we would, we would look to see whether there's something we can rely upon. Now, there are, there are auditing standards that place a burden on some of the work that we need to do. But if, if we could, we would look to do that so that we, we don't sort of have too much overlap. In the performance audit space, it will be more to sort of get an understanding of risk. And that understanding of risk might then informal shape how we look at the audit and, and take it forward. So it's part of that evidence base that you would gather.
But there's no, if you'll just indulge me, a final, there's no current requirement within the framework for agencies to audit themselves? Or is it an inherent?
No, so, I mean, what?
If we were gonna make a recommendation that may have some sort of bolstering impact, you know, effect in terms of the guardrails, I mean?
Bear in mind that internal audit is a profession in its own right and the, the governance around it is the Institute of Internal Auditors. So, yeah, in a well-functioned internal audit, in a well-functioning internal audit function, you would expect to see that management gets a review of their internal audit. Now, the Institute of Internal Audit can facilitate that review. So that would be a review of, you know, the effectiveness of internal audit for management. What we are simply would be looking at is, is it would just be part of the evidence base that would inform or shape how we look at an audit topic.
That has brought us to the end of our time. And we want to thank you again, particularly the auditor general on your final afternoon, making the time to come and see us, we appreciate it. But you may take comfort in knowing our supplementary questions will go to Mr Goodwin and Ms, Ms Magotto. And there'll be 21 days if you could respond within that time, we'd appreciate it then. But again, Ms Goodwin, thank you so much and for all of the work that you've done on behalf of the state. We wish you well.
Thank you so much. I would just say that it's been an incredible honour and privilege to serve the Parliament of New South Wales. And I wish everyone here and more broadly, all the best for the future.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.